Good evening, everybody. We're gonna call it a order, the zoning board of appeals meeting for Wednesday, October 17th, First thing on our agenda is the continued hearing for 154, 156 North Borough Road.
Okay.
Take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You wanna Joel sit with me?
We're back.
Yes. We were here back in February where we applied for special permishes and variances. And we were granted variances for setback relief. And the board instructed us, rightfully so, to go in front of the planning board to discuss site plan approval and low-impact development approval. So we've done that. We've had several meetings with the planning board and the open space commission. They gave us a lot of good feedback. The project has changed somewhat, which we will, which I'll have the engineer Paul show us in a little bit. And we're here tonight because the application for the special permits is still outstanding. And that is, we need a, three special permits for the uses that are proposed on the property. Those uses are a private garage, which is not permitted in the district without a special permit, light manufacturing, which is not permitted in the district without a special permit. And then an additional proposed use is an office and a, and storage. Those uses are permitted in the district, but because there are multiple uses on the property, multiple uses require a special permit. The planning board would like a decision from the ZBA because they've looked at the traffic in the stormwater, and they seem to be, from what we can tell, happy with everything. But they want to have a finalization about how the property's gonna be used. With that, I'm gonna have Paul just explain some of the changes, because you haven't seen the plan since February, so he's gonna show it to you like you've seen it for the first time. But he's also going to highlight the changes that were made since February and why those changes were made.
Like Mark said, I am Paul.
Can you give us your name, just so we get it for the record?
I'm Paul Kirchner from Stamske and McCanary. Since you last saw this project earlier this year, it's gone through extensive revisions in order to come into compliance with the planning board's low-impact development regulations. Some of the more significant changes include the redesign of our drainage system. It's much less reliant on structural drainage than it was previously. There's also a connector building that proposed between buildings A and B, and that will be office-based, as can be seen in the architectural plans. Additionally, it will be one-way traffic east through the site. We consulted with the fire chief to provide the minimum driveway width. And other than that, it remains largely the same as far as uses and the intent of the project.
So when we, when we look at the special permit, there is a outline conditions under your bylaw 1749. It says a special permit shall be granted if it meets certain criteria. That is, number one, location. This location is in a very commercial area that's being underutilized and obviously is in, you know, sort of a corner spot where this piece of property, as you know, the history of it, has been tried to been developed a few times before. There's no residential neighborhoods or anything like that around. The second is the activity and mix. This is something that people need. We're having people try to build these storage spaces over the place. Local businesses are in high demand for this type of storage and this type of space to use. Access from the traffic report that we submitted to the planning board and discussions with the planning board, we believe that this entrance in and out is, provides a safe access opposed to the two-way traffics we, we previously submitted. If you look at the architectural plans, this is something that doesn't look like your typical storage unit. They're usually ugly. This is not ugly. This is supposed to look nice. We specifically put the parking behind the building so that you wouldn't see any of the parking when you drove by. With that, well, and, and I shouldn't tell you that, I'm sorry, I didn't introduce the applicant Joel, who is sitting next to me, who can, with me, answer any of the questions that you might have.
Okay?
Yeah.
I mean, we've heard on the special permit before, we've given on the variance already, or approved the variance already. Do we have any additional questions that we wanna ask the applicant now in regards to the proposed uses and things of that nature?
Hi there. I just wanted to ask you about the proposed sign. Are you asking for that this evening?
No, that, that would be part of the planning board's site plan approval.
Okay.
So this is strictly about the use of the property. Now, that doesn't mean you can't take into consideration the plan with the sign and what we propose for the planning board.
Can you tell me a little about the sign? Is this going to be like a neon sign, for example, or something flashing, or what?
No, it's, it's not planned to be a neon sign. It's just planned to be a monument sign, probably with the address on it and then a tenant roster.
Well, one of the concerns that came up in, in February was the, the building commissioner wanted to make sure that the tenants in the storage units notified themselves, let the, the building inspector know who they were, and let the building inspector know exactly what they were doing. And in part of the site plan approval, the applicant has agreed that part of a condition to this special permit or the site plan approval would be a protocol that would require him to let the building inspector of the town know who the tenants are and know exactly what they're doing. And we understand what the definition of the uses are. So the building inspector, in his own wisdom, can make the determinations that these uses are allowed by, by the special permit, if granted.
So can I just ask, the, we have the memo that came to the planning board from Mark. These conditions, were they, did that come out of either the meeting with the building inspector or with the planning board?
Which memo are you referring to?
Referring to the one where you state the four condition.
Yeah, that, that was all part of the, the planning board process.
Okay, all right. So that was as a result of meeting with the planning board?
Yeah, I mean, we got into uses with them as well, and it came up several times, so we, we kind of drilled down a little bit on that. And, and there's, like Chris had said, there's a protocol for, you know, notifying the, the building inspector prior to tenants moving in, and it's pretty, pretty well-defined.
Okay, yeah. I mean, I'm just, they make sense to me. I just tried to look for the origin, and if it's with the planning board, with the building inspector, I think that gives it a lot of work.
Yeah, no, the, the chair of the planning board had, I think, several conversations with the building inspector, but, but he was, I think, at the first meeting, but after that, he wasn't. So this all was basically as part of the, the site plan review process, if that's what you'd refer to it as. But yeah, it was with the planning board.
Okay, thank you.
Can you just review for us again what, if the uses are like light manufacturing, what type of light manufacturing? What type of private?
What type of businesses would actually be in there?
Yeah, so first of all, I would say, we don't know who the tenants are yet, so we don't know exactly what it's going to be. That's why I say, I'll let Joel answer that, what type of tenants he's looking at, but I would, I would say this, that no matter what tenants he signs up with, he has to meet the definition of light manufacturing, whatever that may be defined by the building commissioner when he inspects the property and hears, hears from Joel when somebody moves in. So what would be a typical light manufacturing type of job here?
Well, I, I think we actually defined it.
Right, but that's, that's from the bylaws, so what?
No, no, this is, I don't think it's even defined in the bylaws. I could be wrong, but I don't think all of these were, were defined. And so that's why, you know, we, we got into pretty specific, like light manufacturing, processing, fabricating, assembly, packaging, and our treatment of items taking place wholly within an enclosed building. Light manufacturing includes scientific, you know, R&amp;D, manufacturing, instruction, and other activities clearly incidental thereto, and distribution of inactive items, including but not limited to automobiles, tools, construction trade products, raw material, materials and/or manufactured goods. So I could be wrong, but I, I wanna say that that, I don't, I don't know that that was defined in your bylaws, so I think that came out of the, the process of, with the planning board. And as far as, you know, like a specific company, like Chris said, I mean, this is, this building is, is, as of now, would be completely on spec. So it's, I don't have a, you know, a specific company, and, you know, obviously, from a, from a ownership standpoint, I want as much flexibility as I can get because, you know, it's one thing to get a tenant, it's another thing if I got a tenant and, and all of a sudden, you know, it didn't work for the property. But, so we tried to, to, you know, narrow it down a little bit to say, okay, what are these definitions? But yeah, that's kind of where we were at.
I remember, this was such a long time ago, but was there also, you know, discussion about, could you take down a wall between two units and combine them and make one or something like that?
Well, that, that's not part of, well, maybe.
Well, I mean, I could answer that. Initially, I, I don't, we're not planning on even putting the interior walls up because if you came in and you needed two units, because right now, we're obviously starting from scratch, over time, if, you know, the wall started to get put up and you had, say, three vacant units and somebody wanted all three and they wanted the, the interior walls down, then yeah, that, that could happen. But initially, not knowing exactly what size and, you know, each tenant's gonna need, we're, we're not planning on putting the interior walls up initially, but, you know, that's, that's roughly what, you know, the max number of units that we were planning right there, and we'll kind of see, the market will kind of drive it.
Okay, I mean, I would just say, I think I'm in favor of granting it. I think the issue is just about, you know, whether the uses are compatible and they're appropriate for the location. It's a, just an area where there's no residential developments at all. There's other buildings in town that are like this that don't really pose much of a burden on the town. So that's my inclination.
Okay. Mike, did you, circle back around to you?
No, it's just, we were discussing the buildability of whether or not you're gonna be putting in walls, and I was just gonna say, that was my recollection, it's just gonna be built to fit. This is the max number of units, and if they make, you know, three into one, so be it. But I'm with Andrew as, as far as the, its location and the proposed use, I think, are conforming.
Okay. I don't really have many questions on it at all, so, I mean, I think most of them have been asked. I guess the things that we were concerned with in terms of the uses was exterior storage and screening of anything that's held out, out exterior, because that's the back, in a way, is what's facing the front of these units and making sure that that's kept either screened or cleaned or not allowed to have external storage. Is that part of the, the plan?
Yeah, absolutely, and that should be a condition in the site plan approval as well as, as the special permit, yeah.
Okay. I noticed Mimi Lutrell is here. Have you been discussing, if you could ask, answer the question? Have you guys been discussing screening and storage of stuff outside at the planning board? Fantastic. Just wanna make sure.
If I could just add, we were looking, so we're pretty close on the site plan, but we were looking to the zoning board for the uses, because it's hard to finish the site plan when we're not sure what the uses are.
So right now, you're looking for office, storage, private garage, and light manufacturing?
Correct.
And so the idea here would be, if we're in favor to approve a special permit to have multiple uses that include office, storage, private garage, and light manufacturing, with, trying to think of the proper term, but basically, you know, with necessary screening, lighting, and other site conditions as detailed out by the planning board.
Did you, should we also consider what we got back from the board of health on it as well?
Which was, we have that somewhere?
It's basically saying you don't want it to be used for, you know, residing there. You don't wanna have certain.
Well, I don't think, we're not approving it for anything that could possibly be considered residential.
Right, that's, that's, that was one of my thoughts here, was if it's not approved for that, is this, is this just redundant?
Well, actually, I think the other component is, you know, beyond the dwelling and sleeping purposes, they do actually have a good comment here about clothes washing and showers, which, you know, someone could decide to fit out their office, you know, in a kind of more manufacturing, that's like having a, a work shower there. So that is a good point.
He needed that letter, August 23rd?
23rd? And that, the other one is screened and not for dwelling and sleeping purposes?
So if we have to meet any board of health regulations, that totally makes sense. That's separate than allowing the use. So if the use is allowed, that's one thing. If you, if, if they're talking about installing something, that installation will have to meet board of health regulations, of course.
I mean, it would, in theory, be a separate permit that'd have to be pulled. I mean, I, I would think we'd wanna, do we wanna state in there what they have already agreed to with the, with the planning board in addition, towards what they already submitted and somewhere in that house of paper?
This, so I, I think we're probably.
No, 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 not that.
Yeah, this is the board of health.
Overthinking it?
I think we might be overthinking it a bit. So I think the idea is, we are allowing multiple uses as part of this special permit that include office, storage, private garage, light manufacturing, none of which allow for sleeping or dwelling, and final, final site plan review by, you know, pending final site plan review by the planning board, and ensuring they follow the requirements of board of health.
I second that. Yeah, I mean, I just, your point about, so the screenings and exterior storage, you think should be put up to the planning board?
I believe that's, that's why I wanted Ms. Luchal to comment on that, that they're already discussing the idea of screening and making sure that stuff isn't out there as part of their site plan.
I think it makes sense to do it that way, because, I mean, rather than have us impose a condition, because it is in the back, right?
Yeah, it's, the back is really the front.
I mean, if, if there were things stored in the back, it would be very difficult to see them, right? Because there's no, there's a railroad behind there, there's no other.
Right, but the. It's not really the back, though. I mean, everybody's front door from the parking is the back, so the back of their units is really facing the street, in a way.
I guess I'm thinking, like, the average person driving down North Borough Road, if there's some stuff stored in the back, they're not gonna see it, based on how this building is configured.
The parking is behind the building, essentially.
Right, so, but everybody who parks there to go to a site and go to visit somebody, essentially, the front door of that business is on the parking side.
Yeah.
They're not gonna like walk around onto the grass and enter somewhere else.
There's no doors on the front side.
None whatsoever, so there's no way they can ever put anything back there and have actually any readable, readily available access to it. You don't have a second egress in the back to emergency egress for these people.
Well, I would call the part, the, the roadside, the front, actually. So this is, this is the roadside here, and it's all windows. This originally had a door here, but we replaced that with windows.
Okay.
And this is the back with the garage doors and the man door.
Okay.
So, yeah, I mean, there's, there's no real reason for anybody to go out front unless they're doing some landscaping.
Before we actually do anything else, we should probably let people in the audience have a word. So if you can get to a microphone, introduce yourself.
I live at One Admiral's Lane in South Row, and your issue, you shouldn't restrict him to not being able to have doors on the front side of the building, 'cause he may need emergency access from the building code. The building code will, will take care of that. The other thing I'd like to say is, I permitted this site when I was a young man, and it's been sitting there vacant for a long time, and this seems like it's a great use. It's very innocuous out there, as you said. There's no residential neighbors, you've got the railroad behind you. I think it'd be great to get it on the tax rolls for the community, and we should find other projects like this in town.
Thank you for your comment. Yeah, I didn't wanna like suggest that you couldn't have doors, I just wanted to make sure that if there's a door out there and people decide to wanna start putting stuff there, that it gets addressed with the planning board for proper screening, so. Okay, any other comments from the gallery? All right, we need to close public hearing?
But, I'll do one thing before we close the public hearing.
Yes.
Just to ask the applicant's attorney, so in terms of the condition, are you, the, the memo that you wrote, or your office wrote on August 23rd, 2018?
Yep.
This, this just memo could be a condition, right?
Yeah, it could be, and I think that that's the way that it was built. And to be honest with you, I think that this is what should be part of the special, it should be part of the special permit decision opposed to the site plan decision.
I think that's a good idea, and I had not, I think it's a very good suggestion, the paragraph two, that for a new tenant enters, the landlord gives the building inspector information about the type of business, but, okay, when you say the landlord shall within 30 days thereafter, what about 30 days before? Right? Instead of, 'cause I, I'm just reading this more closely, you're saying after a tenant takes possession, they're already doing something. You're gonna tell the building inspector what's going on. What about instead saying that 30 days before they take possession?
Uh, because typically, building inspectors like to see them in there rather than just with a, with a plan. But I, I understand the concern. The, the other problem with that is that sometimes these leases happen really quick and they overturn quickly, so 30 years, 30 days before is probably a little bit difficult. But I think 30 days after, I think, is, is reasonable under these circumstances to get every single unit owner to make sure that they get signed off on the, by the building inspector. But, but not to say that it wouldn't be in the, in the applicant's best interest, and not to say the tenant's best interest, to check with the building inspector before they're in there.
Right.
But to make that a requirement, I think is just a little bit difficult to do.
I mean, you might consider paragraph four of that, says, when a tenant terminates a lease from the unit on the premises, the landlord shall provide written notice to the building inspector. So the building.
I, I don't know, like, the two of them combined? Sort of. Okay.
Fill that, if you will?
I think I see what you're saying.
You know, it's hard to say, you know, it's hard to say, it's either, I think it's easier for the town and easier for the owner to say, okay, we're in, this is what we're doing, and then show it, rather than say, this is what we're going to do. I think it just makes it.
Because if the building inspector then came in and saw what was going on, saying, this is not one of the permanent uses, he could say, you have to get out.
I think it's easier for both sides.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sign with me.
Okay, any other things we wanna do before we close public hearing?
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second?
All in favor? All right. Do we have a motion for a decision on this?
I move that we approve the special permit application with two conditions. One is that the planning board consult with the, the applicant consult with the planning board about appropriate screening for exterior storage, and that two, we incorporate as a condition in our decision, the, the protocol for new tenants in the applicant's.
Which paragraph is that?
It's the whole memo.
The whole memo.
Dated.
The 82318 memo. The eight-twenty-three-eighteen memo.
My second.
All in favor? All right.
Thank you very much.
We're good. Thank you very much.
I hope everybody's home and talking to the Red Sox game. It's a late start.
Yeah, central time. Got to love it. Okay. Next item on the agenda is the continued hearing of one-twenty Main Street.
Good evening, Chair and Mr. Boyd.
Make sure the microphone gets a little closer to you.
I'm William Pizzoni. I'm an attorney with Dave Pitney. I represent the applicants. I submitted to you earlier this week, or I believe it was last week, a memo which detailed the timeline for you on this property and how we've gotten from here to when they first built the garage. Barn, and my normal memo that I submit to run through the criteria to meet for a variance as well. As you know, this is a request for variance because they exceed the maximum height of seventeen feet and one story for an accessory building. If I may, for those people that don't know what we're talking about, the property is at one-twenty Main as you're going out of town towards West Row. Just after you get through the row of houses, there's a bunch of dense trees and brush, and you can't see the four or five houses that are back there. This is one of the houses that is in the back, and the house is situated back here. The home itself, if you haven't been out to the site, I don't know if the members have been out there, was built back in the, I believe, the nineties. Jose Martin's built it for, I believe, the Davis family, and they have since conveyed it to my clients, which existed, this house here is what my clients bought. And, as you know, they, I believe they submitted in their package a bunch of documentation to show the timeline, but they hadn't laid it out for you directly. They actually applied for a building permit back in May of two thousand and twelve, which depicted the fact that they were going to build the barn, the Yankee Barn facility. But it was also going to include an attached underground tunnel to get to the main house. This is the plan that was submitted and the building department had. It shows the connection in the box culvert where the tunnel would go. These are photos that are taken around the time that the foundation was being put in. You can see there's lots of ledges that they ran into. There are a lot of water issues as well. I mean, there's all ledge piled up back here. I've got a couple of invoices, I believe, that I submitted that showed that they actually hauled out about fifty thousand dollars worth of ledge between, and there were water issues as well for this site in this area when they were doing this work. Just to give you an idea of the layout of the lot, their house is back here about two-thirds of the way in off of Main Street. Behind it is the Commonwealth's Aqueduct area. This is all kind of wet and would be within the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission, so no septic system could ever go there. When I did some research and went back, when they were designing the house, the original house, and building the septic system, which ended up having to be built up here, they did a bunch of test pits down in this area. And the one that was between the house and where the barn's going to go actually had water at twenty-four inches. So there's a very high water table in there, and there were issues. They built an injector pump for the system to pump it all the way up to the system. So it's clear there are issues there with the soil and the topography and the makeup of the property. I want to just take you back a little bit, though, because when my clients designed this, they didn't want to take away from the pristine view of the property. They just wanted to put an accessory building that they could access, but leave the view kind of nice, you know, so it wasn't just this big massive home. And that's why they designed the tunnel. Now they're faced with, if they're going to build this, they're going to have to do a bridge because you're not going to be able to put it on the ground even to connect it because you're going to have to have footings or a knee wall for a crawl space or a foundation, which you can't with the water table and the ledge that's there. It would just be, the water table would seep into whatever you built. Okay, so they did take the time this spring after they met with the building inspector, and I can go through the whole history if you want, but I think I presented it to you, how they had Yankee Barn doing most of the work. They were proceeding as the general on the project. They worked with the building inspector in pulling the permits, showing the plans, and getting it approved. And in fact, when they ran into this situation, they told my clients, they went to the building inspector, addressed it with him, and he said, "Yeah, proceed. Go right ahead." And they, my clients figured it was fixed. After that occurred, not only did the building inspector come out and inspect the footings, the foundation, he inspected the frame and everything when it went up. He never said a word that there wasn't a connection to a tunnel, so my clients believed, "We're all set. I don't have the need for the tunnel." Unfortunately, or fortunately, they ran into problems, well, fortunately, my client sold his business, but unfortunately, they ran into problems with Yankee Barn, and the project sat idle for many years. He decided to finish it up. They had done some of the rough plumbing and rough electrical earlier on, and he went to the building inspector this year, as you know, asked for a new permit to just put on the building. He thought the other one was good. Obviously, he's a novice. He doesn't do construction. And the building inspector said, "Well, you need a new permit. You have to apply for a new permit." And that's when the building inspector advised him that you need a connection, otherwise you need to go get a variance because the building you've built exceeds seventeen feet and one story. So this spring, my clients embarked on a mission to try to figure out what they could do. They hired several architects and ran up quite a few costs and expenses, actually. And what they came up with... These are two scenarios that they had drafted and looked at to try to figure out to do it with a bridge to connect the two of them across. When they looked at that and saw what was, you know, what it was going to look like, obviously, it would be connecting across here, it would make the house look just too huge and too out of place in what's a very nice rural pastoral setting. As you can see, there are basically two neighbors. There's one up in here that really can't see the barn through there. The other one is over here, and I believe Mrs. Crowley has sent a couple of letters. They're over here through the woods over here. But if I was them, I wouldn't want to be looking across and seeing a bridge or a big massive house like that. And, but that's my, my thoughts. But my clients felt that in order to maintain the pristine aspect of it, they'll deal with going back and forth to the thing in the middle of the winter when it's cold instead of being able to go through the house. So you understand, my client sold his business. He uses it as a workshop. He actually does some three-D carving in there, and he spends a lot of time in there. This, this is a situation that was not brought on by my clients. They were trying to do everything right. They were trying to maintain the rural character of the neighborhood. Once they get into construction and after they had hired somebody that they thought would be able to do the job appropriately for them, then everything changed. They thought it changed all right, and they could proceed. The building got put up. The building inspector signed off at least three times without a comment. So they, they always thought they were in the right, and they were moving in the right direction. To connect it would be really, not only from a visual standpoint, in my mind, not the best thing to do for this property because it would take so much away from it. If they were to try to construct the bridge, we had those priced out there in the vicinity of over four hundred, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars to just put the bridge connections. Plus, they're not going to look right. It's not going to be right for that, that portion of the neighborhood. I know you asked my client for some evidence relative to payments he had made. I have copies of checks here. I do not like submitting them via email or even leaving them with the board, but I'll leave them right now for you to pass around and look at because they have, not only, while my client redacted his numbers off of the bottom of it, but the people that cashed the checks, theirs are on the back. So I really don't think that they should be passed around or for the public to look at.
Do you have any receipts from when that, I don't know if tunnel is the right word, but was there, was there any documentation with respect to, okay, we've tried to build in that crawl space connection? Any, any documentation from that?
Well, no. When they did all the excavation, they found all the ledge and the high water table. When you go and you researches and you look at it, the water tables are twenty-four inches under the ground. So anything you're going to build under there is going to be surrounded by water, and it's most likely going to leak. It's, it's the type of thing that you're just not going to be able to construct it. There were several, or at least two invoices, I think I submitted, that had to do with the upcharge for the work that had to be done, getting rid of the ledge in the area and the water issues by the Yankee Barn, and also the following year by the landscaping company. When they went out to do some landscaping, they ran into ledge as well. So I think it's documented that the site has high water and lots of ledge on it.
I'm sorry. Line if I just...
Go ahead.
So these are checks from, to the architect from two thousand and eight investigating to build the...
Options, yes. Yeah, and actually, Mike Sullivan from Connorstone also went out, and they had to do topography and look at the site to figure out how it would all work. So they, they made a good faith effort to try to see if there was a way to do this in a reasonable fashion.
Yes. So I'm sorry, Derek, if I'm repeating what's already been said, but all the checks were really about designing something to be able to connect the two?
No, I gave you the invoice from Yankee Barn for thirty, whatever it was, almost forty thousand dollars and the landscaping company, the one from Yankee Barn, that was all ledge and water remediation.
Okay.
That they had looked in that area.
So it's okay to keep these documents for the file?
You can keep those. I'd like the checks back if I could.
Karen, can I...
What's he doing? There you go.
These are all about, but they're all about the bridge addition, right?
Right, right.
All right.
Well, they, they made the determination early on that they can't go through the ground.
I guess what I was looking for, I didn't know if, I saw Connorstone Engineering there. I didn't know if they rendered an opinion on the suitability of the land.
No, but if you go back and if you go pull the Board of Health file, like I said, you look at the test pits. The one in the area where this is, the water tables are twenty-four inches.
Okay.
And you go up the hill, it gets seventy, then it goes ninety, then it goes one-twenty. So it's still under there pretty well. And I will wait to address the letter by the abutter because she sent a new letter.
Yep. Any other comments from gallery? Okay. We do have the, try to find my, all my versions of the letters. Ms. Crowley at one-sixteen Main Street has submitted three letters. One dated October fifteenth, the original email August twenty-seventh, and a follow-up letter September twelfth. All voicing her opposition to granting the variance on the concern that, one, allowing something of this structure and size and height and mass and everything else would be a precedent. I'm not necessarily terribly concerned about that because any other time it would have to come through it, and obviously, circumstances change time to time. One that we talked about the first time they were here, which is, it's essentially another house on the property. And could it ever be subdivided, used as a second house, used as a rental property, something along those lines? I think that's probably more of her main concern is ultimately having multiple families on the lot next door to her. Not speaking for her, but I, that seems to be the gist of it. And as a, and the third part that she offered is, if we were to move forward, would we be interested in requiring a deed restriction, that the property not be subdivided? And therefore, not be able to have a condo map put on it, not be subdivided, not allow that structure to be used as a secondary residence? And you wanted to respond to this?
Yes, if I could. And, you know, my clients, they have the same fears that the abutters to them are going to subdivide their properties. Unfortunately, this property only has frontage for one house, okay? Could not be subdivided under today's zoning. Zoning would have to change in order for that to happen, and frankly, I don't see that happening in this section of town. That's number one. Number two, if they were to use it for, like, an in-law apartment or something like that, they'd have to come back to this board to get a special permit. They can't just do it, okay? So there are controls in place to address a lot of these things. That being said, you know, my client doesn't have a problem saying they're not going to subdivide the property, but I think you can only put that through their tenure. I don't think you can do that on an item because you have to be careful on how you, I put a paragraph at the end of my memo to you that explains certain things you can do and you can't do. They just, they just want to do what's right here. They wanted to do what was right from the beginning. Unfortunately, what they wanted isn't practical or even probably, I don't know, Board of Health would allow them to do it with the water the way it is and the seepage that could come through there. And the expense is just, it's obscene to have to address this. I think, you know, myself, I mean, you've, you've seen it. I think the pastoral setting is a much nicer view, both for the neighbors and for anybody else that might see it, although the only people that are going to see it are the neighbors and the owners of the property because you don't see it from the street. So I, I mean, I, I, I understand Mrs. Crowley's concerns because I wouldn't want the property next to me subdivided either. But we do have rules and regulations in place that protect that from happening today. So, you know, I'm, I'm open to listening to what you might suggest. I think you could put in there that, you know, that, number one, they can't utilize it for any type of sleeping or apartment, accessory apartment, without coming back. But, you know, that's the bylaw anyhow. But if your bylaw changes, at least they're under an obligation to come to you. And that being said, I mean, I can run through the criteria for the variance, which, you know, I've submitted to you already. It's in the record. I don't think you need to hear it more than once, and I kind of reiterated it with my presentation. So if you have any other questions or comments?
Mike?
You know, the milk's already out of the cow, so to speak, on this. The structure's there. I don't disagree that the breezeway, I think, would be detrimental from an aesthetic view. I actually went to the site personally just to look at it. That being said, I don't know how this got built the way it got built. There's something that doesn't, one plus one doesn't equal five on this. That being said, it's already done. You know, so I can't go back in time and try to ascertain what really happened with respect to the building permits and how the two structures got built without that breezeway and/or, you know, if that ledge was being such a problem, they probably should have built the trench first before they built the accessory building. And so I, I wonder the timing of when those things were done, but that's neither here nor there. You know, I'm in favor of allowing the variance because it's there. It's already, it's already there. I would put it subject to some of the restrictions that have already been laid out because I think the concern is, is for everyone, is that today it's, you know, a workshop, and tomorrow it's... tomorrow it's someone else's house. And I think that's, I think that's a reasonable concern.
I, I, I agree with Mike. I really don't have any additional questions. Thanks.
Yeah, I'll try to avoid repeating what Mike said, but I mean, it, it exists. I think any attempt to put in a breezeway to comply is just, is ugly and a waste of time. It exists. I think, I think we can have a very simple condition that you can't use it as a, as a residence. I, I, I hear what Tony Pizzoni is saying about they'd have to come back anyhow, but I, I would agree, it does no harm to put in some kind of condition similar to that.
I, I think Mike put it really well. You know, we're left with really not really good options here. This is one of the weirdest cases that four or five years in the board have ever seen. And I think the whole root of it is this idea that by building a tunnel between two buildings, you, that makes it not two structures, but one. And I don't agree with it, but that's what the, that's what the, that's what the permit was a long time ago. And I mean, I, you know, there are some questions about the chronology here, but what, what's the point of getting into a whole, you know, trial about it at this point? I think it's maybe worth thinking about. None of the options are good. Tearing the whole thing down, no. It's actually nice looking.
Right.
And the, the comments from the abutter are not suggesting that she objects to this, to the structure. It's that concerns about subdividing, I mean, if you look at that, you would, that would not be a, the, the two structures are pretty close together. Really wouldn't be a practical way to do it. And, but I think, you know, it has me thinking about ways maybe, I don't know, the, the planning board or, so there could be maybe some amendment to the zoning bylaws in the next couple of years to prevent future things like this. I mean, I've never, I did not know that that was the rule, that by building a tunnel, you could, it would be, you know, much better to just have some other way of, you know, clearing this before it was built. But you're right, it's been built.
If, if, if I could, Mr. Chair, the other thing you need to take into consideration, if you were to subdivide this, you're not gonna get a perk on that bottom half of the lot to build a septic system. That's why they're way up at the street. So, the reality is, it's never gonna happen.
Yeah. So, yeah, I'm, it's, it's the same concept, you know? It's like not allowing it to be finished on the inside only increases the chances that it'll deteriorate and become less aesthetically pleasing than it is now because it will essentially be unusable. Not that you're gonna let anything happen to your property, but conceivably, you know, you don't have the right heating, you don't have everything else going on in there to keep the building the way it's supposed to be. I do think we should put a condition on there that it cannot be used without, as a residence, without coming back to the board for special permit. I, I haven't even thought about this until the idea that it wouldn't be used as a residence, but like even the whole Airbnb thing. If there's a room in there with a bathroom and a kitchen as the plans show, I don't know if they'll actually build it, but technically they could. Don't want it to be used for that. I don't even think it's an approved use, but people do it anyway. So, I think the condition needs to be not just used as a residence, but as any sort of sleeping...
No residential use.
Dwelling use inside of it.
Without obtaining the proper permits.
Without obtaining proper permits, yeah.
Okay.
Are we kinda, we should close the public hearing if we're ready.
Okay, I have one other, and last comment for the, for Mr. Pizzoni. So, in terms of the relief that we would grant, it would be what, to like give a variance and then direct the building inspector to grant the permit to construct the inside of it?
No, once, once you give him, give them the variance for the height that they, that they need...
So, yeah, we gotta go back to their...
They just go back to the building inspector to get the updated permit so they can finish. I mean, there's a lot of, there's a lot of the plumbing, the electrical, the heat, it's already in there. It just needs to be finished so they can close the walls. So, Mark would just issue the, another permit for them to finish that. The variance would, we have to wait for the 20 days and any appeal, obviously, before they could pull that.
So, that's the relief they're looking for is the, the height and the multiple stories.
All right. I mean, it's gonna be an interesting one to write.
I'll assist you if you like.
Rather than just recite the, well, I, I was gonna...
Yeah.
That you, you would offer to...
I would offer to, to put it together for you. But you need to take the vote so that I can get the actual verbiage.
All right. So, if we're ready, then we should close the public hearing.
Yeah, I mean, it's gotta recite the weird history of it.
Yeah, I understand.
Anyone wanna move to close the public hearing?
I move that we close the public hearing.
Anyone want to second it?
Second.
All in favor? All right?
Thank you.
Okay, and, well, that's a public hearing. So, now let's actually vote to approve the variance for the height and the additional story with the restrictions for no dwelling purposes, residential uses within the structure. Go for it. Anyone?
I'd move that we approve the variance with the condition that, that like, that the structure not be used for residence, many sort, without coming back before the board for special permit.
Or temporary dwelling or anything like that.
Sure.
Second it?
All in favor? All right?
Thank you.
Fantastic.
I might get home in time for the game.
Lucky. All right. Next up, we're on to new public hearings. 50 Framingham Road.
Good evening. My name's Karen Keegan. I'm from Guaranteed Builders. I'm here to represent Mr. Ferris this evening. Special permit first. What are we starting with? It's a pleasure.
Ever you wanna start with. We should leave the public hearing notice. Do you wanna start with variance or special permit?
Special permit out of the way, and then we can focus on the variance, one way or the other.
I agree.
Okay. Special permit first.
Okay, so the public hearing combines both.
Okay.
Mr. Adam Ferris, 50 Framingham Road, Southborough, Mass. The Board of Appeals of the Town of Southborough will hold a public hearing in the Thomas J. McGoliffe hearing room of the Southborough Townhouse, 17 Common Street, on Wednesday, October 17th, 2018, at 7:30 PM with regard to the petition of Mr. Adam Ferris, 50 Framingham Road, Southborough. The petitioner is seeking a height variance for an accessory structure which exceeds both the height requirement of 17 feet and the number of stories by one. The petitioner is also seeking a special permit to construct an additional detached two-car garage for existing home with a two-car garage, exceeding the maximum of three vehicles allowed by one. Relief requested pursuant to Section 174 8.2D4, maximum height 17 feet and one story, as well as Section 174 8.2A8 states, construction of a private garage for not more than three vehicles. A copy of the application may be reviewed at the office of the Building Department, located at 9 Cordova Road, Southborough, Mass., during normal business hours. Craig Nicholson, Chairman.
Hi, good evening.
Hi.
Mr. Ferris would like to construct a 28 by 30-foot two-story garage on, in front of his lot. His lot is located at 50 Framingham Road. The house sits way back and as far back as you can imagine on this lot. At the top of the hill, there's a very large slope in his front, for his front yard, when he also sits across the street from the reservoir, I believe it is. And in between his existing house and his proposed garage is his, is his existing septic system. So, what he's trying to do is he's trying to propose this garage to fit into the bank so that one story is level with the ground at the house, but two stories is shown at the street. He now has two parking areas underneath the, underneath the existing house. He has, you know, a two-car under. And he is proposing for a two-car garage on the first floor of this proposed garage, two-car in there. He has proposed erosion controls around it because there is a head wall at the bottom of the hill, I guess, that supposedly drains into the reservoir, but according to Mr. Ferris does not do a great job with that. The drainage does come off the hill and he informed me that it pools somewhere out in the front between the two lots of, I guess, 52 and 50. He's asked the town to fix that, but they have not responded to that. As, as far as his hardships, he right now is renting an off-site storage bin to store some family items that he has. He also has a vintage car that he would like to park and right now they do not fit into the garages that he has. So, therefore, he wishes to construct another garage for those vehicles on his lot.
The car is being stored offsite.
And, and the car is being stored offsite also. Does the board have any questions?
Plans on the second floor for the garage?
The, the only plans on the second floor of the garage is for storage to evacuate my storage unit in, in Southborough and move it into the, and so I have to store it on the second floor.
So, it's not planned to be finished?
Not, not at this time, no. And if there were any plans to finish it, it would just be a, it would just be so we could access it from the, from the front yard and, and use it for an area for, you know, people, keep people out of the sun or whatever. It's not a, no plans for any, no plans for any in-laws or sleeping or any of that. It would just be an additional, like a bonus room, you know, type of thing. But I have no, have no plans on finishing anything anytime soon. I just need a, just for storage for now.
Just to be, just to be clear, any plans to put in rough plumbing that you're gonna tie into the septic tank, anything like that?
At, at this time, no. There's no plans.
The septic tank also sits uphill of this, right now. We would require an ejector pump or something like that. So, the second floor of the building, you could, I'm not sure if he's proposed a door coming out of it. He would exit onto the front of his yard from the second floor so that the only thing would be showing would, the two floors would be at the street level itself.
So, I'm trying to... So, the second floor of the proposed structure would essentially be, its floor would be at grade with the existing first floor of your, your house?
Within a foot. No, 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 would be at grade with the ground at that, at this first floor, at the second floor. So, it's, it's like set into the, into the bank.
Right. So, you, conceivably, you can block out the second floor.
Onto the, onto the yard, yes.
Right. That would be the idea.
Yes.
And it's just for privacy and, you know, I recently had the trees, there's, you know, the trees removed from the front of the yard because of the bittersweet vines that choked them out. Hurricane Sandy uprooted a 60-footer and threw it at my house and ripped off the right hip, uh, corner of the house and, and that, that was back in 2012, of course. So, we've had the, because of the choking of the, the bittersweet vines and now I, I tried for, I've been there 18 years and I've cut them back and cut them back and they just keep on, you know, killing. So, now I was left with a lot of top-heavy crown trees and they were dying and they were rotting. And so, it was a very large expense last summer to remove the trees out front, but in order to preserve the, you know, in order to preserve the property a little bit, I, you know, that's the, and the idea of putting the structure in front of it is to have some privacy as well as to, to shore up. I can, I can now replant on the other side and put nice, fresh trees in because the, now the great, now I'll have a graded lot. So, that, that also, that is my intent is to add some additional privacy and some, you know, some fresh roots and healthy trees for, between the street and the garage in the future.
As you can see from the plan, there is no way to attach this to comply to zoning. There was just no, there's just no room at the top of that hill.
You wanna build a tunnel?
Yeah, no, no tunnels, no tunnels reserved now.
That's good.
I'm gonna have to try that one. No kidding. There's also a safety issue on this too. I gather that, that driveway gets a little icy in the winter time and so to store, to be able to park lower down the hill, Mr. Ferris was looking at that.
My fiancee's essential personnel. She's a police officer in Mission Hill in Boston, and so she's required to travel into Mission Hill. And so, to keep her at the bottom of the hill during snowstorms is, is essential. And so, keep her off the lawns and keep her off, you know, keep her safe so I can get out there. If I can get out there in snowplow beforehand, it's great. And if not, sometimes she has to travel within, travel to Boston, you know, during, during a heavy snowstorm.
No intended mixed use as far as like running a landscaping business or anything out of that garage?
Just, just for my car.
Just out of curiosity, what kind of car?
Oh, good question. It was, I, I recently found after selling it after 25 years, my high school car, a $19.69 Charger. It keeps me, you know, it keeps me out of trouble on the weekends, right?
And so, we do have a, one letter, there was a second. We have one letter which was anonymous. Regarding the flooding at the front of the property and the measures being done, which I'm sure will, you know, be looked at from Conservation Commission and, and Planning Board, but I do wanna hear how you're addressing the drainage and the flow of that, just out of curiosity to, to get a sense of it.
Every, every drain on my, everything on my property, 50 Framingham Road, the front drain in the back, all drains towards the, all drains towards the front of the house and it, it collects the, there's a pool, if you look at the site plan, there's a, there's a very deep ditch at the bottom and it collects there. So, I have, I do, I do not eject any water onto the street, but the, on the, the median strip behind, about, the water started pooling on 50, it actually pools on the road, it doesn't pool on the property. I addressed this with the town several times. I've gone down there, it's been 10 years. About 05, 06, my neighbors to the rear in nine overlooked drive put a septic system and even elevated the hill even higher behind my house. And it shed, and it does, that, that property and the neighbor's property, it does shed water down the median strip. And when it comes down the median strip, which is to the right of where the apron is on the driveway, there's water that pools. But in that apron, there's no place, there's no drainage, there's, there's two drainage ditches on either side of the, of each driveway, 52 and 50 Framingham Road, but there's no access to them. And I went to the town explaining this and like, it's not, that apron is not on my, you know, the apron is not on my property. I, you know, it's, if you, if you put the drainage, if you put a subsequent drainage on there, in the median and drain it out to either drainage ditch, it'll alleviate that puddle on the road. I'm the one who gets splashed trying to get my mail every day. So, so I, I've been wanting to get rid of it for 10 years, so it, but there's nothing on my property that drains out to the street. I, I drain it right into, you know, and the plans that she has, that GBI has done is an excellent job of keeping the water focused.
Focused on the lot as it is, to, to reach that head wall at the bottom.
So, I have no ejectors, ejector pumps or anything at the top of the hill. There's no, I don't, I do not take any water at all in my house.
There is a French drain proposed, but that's proposed to daylight and it also drained right into that area.
Okay. We also have a letter from your neighbor at 52 Framingham Road voicing their support. Have you talked to your other neighbor at, on the other side of your property?
They, the, on 48 Framingham Road, the neighbors, we've spoken, yep, and they, but they are renters of the property and nice people, small family and they're in favor of, you know, they're having additional privacy, they have small children, but they usually play in the rear and it's all fenced in on their side, so. But they didn't, they weren't opposed to anything, you know, you know, in being there. At least they didn't express any...
Any other questions on, from us? Any questions from gallery? Go to the microphone. Introduce yourself.
Hi, my husband, Peter White, and I, Alice, live on Overlook Drive. Have lived there for thirty years. As you know, it's parallel to Framingham Road. We're just above the property and just slightly north. Before I make my comments, I had a couple of questions. Perhaps we are misinformed. We were under the impression that the garage to be built was two-story with some sort of hydraulic lift for two cars. Is that correct?
There is no plans for any hydraulic lift. There is, in the plans, there, in the plans, I have put in a thick floor, a six-inch floor. So I could put a lift in, a four-post lift in, down the road. But it's, there's no, there's no, but I wouldn't, is there opposition to that or?
No, I just wanted to clarify because you didn't mention that.
Yeah, I ideally would like to, down the road, after I get moved in and hopefully get it approved, I'd like to put it, just to keep it up in the air for any rodents or...
So you're not planning, you're not planning on storing multiple cars?
Well, no, just the two in the driveway.
All right. Well, thank you for clarifying that.
And could you give the address on Overlook again?
We're at fifteen. So we are, we are about a house and a half up from being above fifty Framingham Road. Our concerns are that if a variance is granted, how, what kind of precedent that might set for other houses along Framingham Road, what may happen. Obviously, one of the things that makes our property valuable is the views that we have of the reservoir. For half the year, we can see the reservoir. In the summertime, the deciduous trees block the view. I understand what Mr. Ferris has said about the issue with the bittersweet and that is an issue, a difficult issue to fight. I'm not sure exactly how long ago it was, and we do understand that you have the right to clearcut your property. And you have the right to use as much herbicide as you wish on it in order to kill or control the growth on it. But it has been, you know, it's been, the trees have all been cut down. Our main concern is that for six months of the year, since all those trees were cut, that we now, from our kitchen, when we look out, are seeing all the traffic on Framingham Road go back and forth. If this variance is granted, we would request that not just deciduous trees, but good pine trees be planted in such a manner as to help preserve the quality and the value of our property and control the views, well, prevent us having the views of the traffic on Framingham Road. There's a noise issue also. The more trees that are cut down, amazingly enough, that small road, everything echoes off the water. I'm not arguing with the issue that you have the right to do that, but that's how it's affected us. So our first choice would be that not to have it happen, to have the trees go back. If the variance is granted, we would request that a serious number of evergreen trees be planted in such a manner that we, our quality of life there would be restored. And that's really all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, anyone else here? If you could get to the, why don't you give them the, one of the hand ones? Actually, you know what, sir? Sir, we'll just give you a hand one.
Thank you. Russian, who knew? And simple solution for the evergreens would be some sort of a two-layered system that would block both the sight and the sound, both for you and for us. Not expensive, it's very, very reasonable and easy thing to accomplish.
That's actually, that's actually what's proposed here.
You know, we don't have any pictures. So we're sort of waving our arms in the air trying to figure out what the hell, what the heck you're building. And as long as it doesn't look industrial in any way, shape or form from the street, we're just happy.
Sure. No, I proposed, the plans that I chose to build the garage were almost identical match to my home. So it would look like a little home next to, and it would be, of course, painted and sided with a similar color. Or I'll paint my house to match the two. I work in architecture, so aesthetics, sir.
Oh, okay.
I've been doing that for thirty years. So it's pretty, it's pretty important to me.
Yeah, so did I for years.
So I, no, I agree and I will take a further into advisement, absolutely.
It's really pretty simple. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Any other questions on our side on the special permit? So the special permit is just for the garage. The variance will actually allow them to do something beyond what's allowed sight and everything else. So it's just to be able to build a garage. So are we ready to?
Can I just say one more thing? You do have a letter that, from number fifty, I mean, Fifty-two, that is in favor of this.
Right. I did, I mentioned the letter from Fifty-two, that they were in support of it, yeah. Which prefaced me asking about the other neighbor. Are we, are we almost ready for this? Okay, anyone want to make a, oh, we should close the public hearing on this part of it, on the special permit? All in favor?
Second, Andrew or?
Andrew. Okay, someone want to make a motion? It sounds like we're generally in favor of the garage. So.
I move that we approve the special permit to construct the additional two-car garage.
Oh, I'm sorry. I do not support that motion. Oh, oh, two, two, oh, okay, yes.
Not the two-story, just the two-car garage.
Okay.
Just the special permit.
Yep.
Okay. Sorry about that.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor of the motion to approve building a two-car, allowing them to build a two-car garage? Detached two-car garage. All in favor? Aye. Okay, so the special permit is done. Now, we will move on to the variance, which is different. And this is where, I think, on the variance side, it also incorporates the idea of what, if we were to go down this route and allow this, what other things we would want to make sure they do, such as screening and things of that nature.
Okay, so should we just kind of open it up for discussion or?
I don't believe, well, let's, let's let them talk about, no, we're into the variance now.
Right. For the special permit.
Yeah. So let's have a discussion on the variance and the hardships incorporated into why the variance needs to be there for an additional story.
So the existing building is somewhere around twenty-three feet tall from the floor of the garage to the callatay.
The house, the existing house?
Of, yes.
Good, just to make sure I'm following you.
For the proposed garage, to the callatay of the proposed garage from the floor of the garage. Somewhere around twenty-three feet.
Twenty-two, ten.
Twenty-two, ten.
Sheet A five. Unovation.
Which, what do you call this, the slide or sheet?
Sheet number is A five.
It's a cathedral seal, ceiling on the second floor. So it's to the callatay. The mean height, when you factor in the grading all the way around it and how much is actually shown of the building, it actually comes out to nineteen, do I have it here? No, it comes out to twenty-two eighty-three. And the, the height restriction is seventeen feet. So I am asking for a variance of, I believe it is five, five, yeah, about six feet.
Okay.
Actually, um...
You're actually, in the, in the application, you say the mean height is nineteen point six five.
Yeah.
Yes. I say is what?
Nineteen point six five.
Yes, it is. So when you factor in, if you were to look at those plans also, the plans for the garage, if you factor in, what sheet is it on? It is on sheet. On sheet A five again. It shows you just how much concrete is showing. So when you see that concrete, he's going to be filling that up against that within a foot or so of fill around the garage. So it's not going to be just all concrete that you're going to see. Half of it, well, a good point, well, a wall of it is completely into the ground. So factoring all that in for the mean height, it came out to nineteen and, what did I say it was?
Nineteen point six five.
Nineteen point six. So the variance is actually for two point six feet. The, Mr. Ferris has chosen the cathedral ceiling and I, I'm, because the cathedral ceiling callatay is higher than a normal ceiling, it brings it to the eight-foot ceiling at the top. That's why the, the height is higher than seventeen feet.
So if you were to go with a flat roof and not do the cathedral ceiling, what would your mean height be?
It would be less than nineteen.
Would it be less than seventeen?
You could probably work it.
So you wouldn't need a variance at all?
Oh, but it would be two stories.
Two, yeah, you'd still need the two stories, but you wouldn't need a height variance. Possibly. Okay.
And the only reason why I was, I chose vaulted ceilings because I'm six foot two. And, you know, like putting shelving in for storage makes sense.
Okay. Any questions down the line?
I'm just, want to, if petitioners could speak as to the hardship, as to why the relief for the variance, they can elaborate on the hardship required to obtain variance.
The hardship for the variance, again, would be for the height requirement. He is six foot two, you know, it's an eight-foot ceiling. That would be your average ceiling on a garage, pretty much.
And the second floor. The second story is to alleviate, I've paid ten thousand dollars in storage fees over the last five years. And so I'd like to not, and so I'd be able to move those belongings into the second floor so I could store them. So I could, we could decide what we're going to eventually do with all that. But I've moved, when my fiancee moved in, or my girlfriend moved in, we also have, there's also two children. So it's family of four, so there's a lot of belongings, a lot of things, a lot of moving parts, so to speak. And we're just deciding on, you know, what to do with all the storage. When you're spending a couple hundred dollars a month in storage, it's, you know, it adds up over five years, you know, so.
And also, the first floor of the garage is a ten-foot floor because, I mean, ten-foot ceiling because he's got that concrete wall there. He may or may not put some sort of a lift in there at some point. So that adds a little bit more. In fact, it adds two feet usually to a garage. Would be the lift on that.
And also, the idea of having the second story to be privacy for the front, for the front yard. And what the neighbors are discussing is, you know, an issue with noise. Well, we deal with the noise up front, because I live on Framingham Road. So, you know, it's to block out the visual of the road as well as to block out the, you know, is just to deaden some of the sound.
Mike, anything else?
Just can't believe, like, I like the design. I think it, from the street, I think it would look good. I wouldn't want to do a flat roof. But at the same time, I just really struggle with the idea of giving out a variance for two feet that, for storage, like, I struggle with the hardship. That's just money. Like, I like it, like, it makes sense to me. I like the look of it. I like, flat roof, I think it would honestly look much worse from an aesthetic point of view. From, if I was in a butter, I wouldn't want a flat roof garage. But at the same time, if I'm hearing the petitioner, he really needs a garage and some storage. Well, that's not a great hardship to me. And I'm like, ah, it's two feet and it's the median, that's where I'm at. I'm still figuring that out. But from my vantage point, I wouldn't want to, like, oh, let's cut it and make it flat roof. But at the same time, like, okay, so you got a little less headroom and you don't need the variance at all.
But I still need the variance for the second floor, right?
The height variance, correct?
Yeah, it's a height variance.
And the second floor. And the second story.
And the second story.
Correct. But you could still accomplish the second story without having the height.
Potentially, yeah. Debbie?
Yeah, I'm having trouble with the hardship on the second floor. I think it sets a precedent. I think we all have stuff and accumulate stuff. I can appreciate what you're saying, though. You spent a lot of years with your stuff in storage. We've had several matters come before the board for storage units. So a lot of people use them. So I'm having trouble with that. I'm not sure I am there and thinking that that's really a hardship because there's ways of storing your stuff. I, what I am having a hard time is I do think it sets a precedent that, you know, everybody's going to want a two-story garage. And that really changes all of Southborough. I'm really struggling with that.
David?
Well, I would agree that the need for storage is not necessarily a hardship. In terms of precedence, I mean, I've been on the board while we approved another, you know, extra garages. In terms of having a second floor, I think one of the mitigating factors in my mind is the fact that it is built into a hill. And the top of the roof is going to be, I'm not sure, I'm pretty sure he's going to be able to look over the roof of the house, roof of the garage from his house, so.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so.
Absolutely.
That, to me, mitigates it somewhat. I mean, I hear what you're saying regarding, you don't necess, you don't... It's easier to make the argument for the garage. It's harder to make the argument for the storage. But like you said, I, to me, it's mitigated somewhat by the fact that you're building into a hill. Neighbor's going to be okay with it. That's where I am.
Andrew?
I have very similar concerns as Mike and Debbie, except I'd go further. I think that, I do not think that the hardship condition has been met. And I think part of it is that the requirement is that the hardship has to be owing to circumstances relating to the soil conditions, shape or topography of the land. And it has to especially affect that land, not just the zoning district. So everyone wants more storage space.
Yeah, sure.
So we're always conscious of the, you know, while each decision doesn't necessarily set a precedent for the next decision, I think we got to be conscious of that. And we have given a special permit for the... And, um, we have given a special permit for the, um, garage. And there have been other cases where we've done that specifically for collector cars. It just has to be, in my opinion, just comply with the, um, existing zoning requirements about, um, yeah.
If I, if I, if I put a flat, uh, ceiling in and met the seventeen, could I get my second story? Because if it, if the, if I drop the whole unit down ten feet and, or eight feet and lose the second story, now the, you basically walk out from the front yard out to the roof. It would be below the.
But I guess you could, you could build a, a, a roof like this that has a mean height of seventeen.
Yes.
Yes.
He's willing to do that.
Yes.
But he wants the second story.
Uh, I believe in, the hardship is the topography of the land. I mean, it's, it's on the top, it, it, because there's a huge slope there. I mean, aesthetically, he's trying to bring this into the, to fit it into the topography of the lot. If he doesn't, he's, you're going to just see a roof, period. Like, that's all you'll see is a roof. From his house, from his neighbor's house, they'll just see a roof. So, so I think that the, the topography does play into this. I think that because he's on the side of this hill, that the second floor kind of plays into it.
I think what she's saying is, if there wasn't the second floor, basically, his kids could be
Playing on the roof.
Playing from the yard onto the roof of a second structure.
Off the end they go. So.
Well, I, I think maybe the, the point he's trying to make is that
Always have a fence.
The topography doesn't create the hardship in the need for a second floor. You could, you could meet the height and not have a second floor, I guess. That might be a strange structure internally, though. I, I, I mean, I'm, I'm still of the opinion that because of the, the hill.
It's still a financial hardship to him, he's, he's, right now, he's renting out a storage unit that just is, it's
Right.
Beginning to be a financial burden to him.
Financial hardship actually isn't one that we consider.
Right.
Um, you know, if it was a financial hardship, every developer out there would say it's, it's just too expensive to grade this the right way, so.
Okay.
That's not one that we actually entertain. Ninety-two. Trying to see. Is there an elevation that kind of shows where it fits into the land in relation to the rest of your property?
It's not, uh, I don't think it was drawn.
Yeah, no, I saw it, it's just.
But you don't, you might, you don't have an elevation. Cross section.
Yeah.
I've got.
Yeah, we have a cross section of the garage.
Not just of the building, but more of like.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I, I driven by the property the other night, but it was kind of later in the afternoon. I, I actually just pulled it up on Google, and that was actually more helpful to me tonight. Like, it's on me on my phone, that's actually what I was doing, it might be worth a while, if you did just take a quick peek at it.
Oh, I'm, I drive by this property all the time.
You know, I'm, I'm, I'm pretty familiar with the property, I, I don't live that far from there, and I've gone by there numerous times. That is a pretty big hill, he sits back.
Oh, I to, I completely understand. I'm just, again, it's, we're bound by the, the law of we need to, there needs to be a proven hardship in order for us to grant a variance. Paying ten thousand dollars over the last five years because the storage doesn't cut it. And as Andrew had said, it needs to be tied to the land and the property and the topography and everything else as to what about your specific property says, I need a second story on this garage?
The, the, the slope.
But it, you can still build the garage with just one story with the slope, right?
It, it would be, well, there would, there wouldn't be any place to, there would be no, there would be, uh, an issue with the, the hardship then would become a, a water issue and water shedding issue, because that would flood the front yard and flood the septic system. Because it wouldn't be able to, the, the water wouldn't be able to shed and drain. The roof would be, the roof line would be so close to the front of the yard that you would not be able to, to evacuate snow, and you would not be able to evacuate water. So, you, if you don't have the height, where the, if, if you don't have the height, then you don't have a, ability to shed the water around the building.
Okay.
Yeah, that, I mean, the, the, the top, topography does help out a little bit here, if you're at eighty-eight feet approximately, call it eighty-seven at the bottom of the garage.
Yep.
And then you're at ninety-two, so you're up roughly another five to six feet to where the, you know, where you meet the, you know, the, the back, not the back, but the side of it, but I think the more important thing is just before the front steps, it's a hundred-four feet, so. That's a, that's a seventeen-foot gap there.
And accessory buildings such as barns are also included in this as well, correct?
Accessory structure?
Right. Around town, there's several two-story barns.
There's a lot of things around town
Right.
Don't comply, but were more than likely built before the current zoning laws in place. So they don't really apply in that sense.
But aesthetically, I don't think it takes away from the town and its necessity for the people that own the farms and what have you, and.
Yeah. I mean, I, I do see the point of, you know, like, two things that would worry me of a single-story garage is the snow and the water, because it's just going to go right to his leaching field, essentially. But I also am concerned about a front yard sloped where, I mean, he has kids, anyone who lives there later could have kids that just comes right out and they just play and go right onto the roof of a building that's seventeen feet above the bottom, the other side of it. You know, you could fence, you could do other things, but.
Well, the, the fencing was, the idea was that the front of the, from the garage on the second floor to go across the front. So you could be able to close the front yard in, so there was protection and safety.
Anyone feeling better about the hardship concept?
There's certainly an argument to be made, I mean, there really is, um, I can't recall who made the point, but with respect to the, the additional concrete, I mean, it, it really does affect the way the structure gets built, I still am trying to wrap my head around about.
Yeah, I mean, not, not, like, again, not necessarily so much about the hardship, but I think the topography plays more into how it's a better fit. I, I mean, we, we hear that argument a lot, like, we're going to set press and everybody's going to want one of these, it's, I don't, I don't necessarily subscribe to that, that you've opened the, you've opened Pandora's box and everybody's going to do it, we've already got.
Oh, there's, there's a two-story, there's a two-story garage at One A Overlook Drive.
Yeah, that, that's been open.
It's around, it's around the block.
I don't think that's sufficient. I, I would feel differently if you're sitting on a
Flat lot.
On a flat lot.
Understood.
Me too.
How about you, Debbie?
I, I, I can understand it, I, I really can, I, I think that, though, if you're talking about creating a structure, you're creating a hardship. I have a hard time understanding or believing that now you have a hardship because you're creating a hardship, so. We have these regulations, we have to abide by these regulations, and I don't, I think from a purist perspective, I don't think that storage is sufficient for a second story, so I'm, I'm really a no on that. I understand, though, that the one sto, you know, the topography plays in your favor, and the one story is now a consideration, but you're making that now a hardship.
No, I was just, I was making the site, uh, the, the site is the condition. And I, I can't do anything about the site, and I'm trying to, uh, uh, improve upon the site by putting a two-story garage. And, and having a one-story is, now becomes a safety issue. Um, that was why I went for this two-story to begin with, I mean, it's, it's significantly more money. It's got, it's additional twenty thousand dollars more to build it, so, yeah, ideally, you know, you, uh, it's, it's, the idea of it is to get, uh, it's not just to give Adam what he wants, it's about making sure that it, it, it fits. Being in the design field for thirty years and making things fit is what I do. So it's, and, and also making sure that it's safe, and I don't, I don't want to flood out a septic system, and I don't want to have an issue down the road, and I would like to have it, it be resellable.
Can't it be put somewhere else on your lot?
No.
The garage, up by the driveway?
No, won't meet zoning if it does that.
Correct.
Won't meet the zoning setbacks.
So that you need a variance?
Yep.
Well, and, and one of the, uh, concerns of the driveway being down there is the, that is a very steep driveway.
Yeah.
Well, I meant up by the house.
Right, it, it's, it's a hundred-and-fifty-foot driveway, a forty, almost a forty-five-degree angle.
Andrew? Andrew, any other?
I want to make a motion, or if everyone's okay, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Anyone else in the audience care to comment before we do that? Okay?
Yes, please.
Oh, again, to the microphone, thank you.
If you do go ahead and approve this, uh, I would like to, I should have mentioned earlier to ask about the size of the evergreens that we've planted there. The reason I keep saying evergreens rather than deciduous trees is that the issue is for the six months of the year when all the other deciduous trees have lost their leaves, so planting really tiny evergreens, uh, is something that would take a long time to give us any kind of relief. That's, so I'd hope you take that into consideration.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So, to, to wrap up what I need to say before you close this public hearing, I do believe the topography does play a big role in the second floor of this. I would not want my roof to sit, um, right on my front yard, if, if it was me, if it was me. So I think that because that lot is so steep, and he is trying to put it into the bank rather than just leave it open, it, he's, he's trying to make this better. And by adding the second floor, I know that he would definitely try to lower that, um, to lower the height of it to the seventeen feet. He definitely needs to put it down there, there was no other place on this lot for it. I, I believe that he needs that second story, and he could definitely take it down to seventeen feet to comply with that.
Okay.
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Is, is there any way that I could come back with a continuance on this?
You always have that right, if you wanted to continue this.
Uh, I don't.
The petitioner makes a motion to continue, they, we can deny it, but.
What, what, why, what would you want to, why would you want to continue?
Well, I could come back with, um, um, a new set of plans to show you what the new height would be, a new set of garage plans with the new height.
Sure. Would it, would, would, like, just a question, would it, would a better elevation plan help at all to say, like, here's the garage and this is where the, you know, the house would be, the, the hill?
You know, I'm, go ahead.
Okay, so here's, I understand that, but, I mean, the situation we're in right now, tonight, is because we have continued, continued, continued a lot of hearings.
Yeah.
Right, so, um, I think we've, we've discussed this, you know?
Mm-hmm.
I'm sorry, we can't hear you.
I said we've, I said, in essence, uh, you know, if we just keep continuing hearings, we clog the docket and it becomes, we're here late at night.
Yeah.
Okay, so before you close this hearing, I'm not getting a really good fuzzy feeling from you all, so I'm going to withdraw without prejudice. That gives us the option to come back with something else on the chop block. So I do get the special permit.
Yes.
But I'm going to withdraw without prejudice tonight.
On the variance.
Yes, because, um, I don't think my client wants to go two years without being able to come back here, and I'm not getting a warm and fuzzy, so, I'm.
I think that's the smart thing to do.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
What do we need to document that?
Do you want to write a letter right here, I'll give you a piece of paper and write date, date.
That's fine.
And then just make a note of that.
We have not yet, so. Who had, uh, made the motion to close the public hearing?
Yes.
Shall we second that? Second by David?
Yep.
All in favor of closing public hearing? Okay. Uh, Mike made the motion, David seconded.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yep.
Thank you, correct. We don't have to continue. I know, I know where they're going, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Perry, you are up. Before Mr. Perry gets too deeply involved in this, if you will give me just a, a quick second, is there anyone in the audience that cares to comment on Mr. Perry's request for a variance for a side porch? I know he hasn't made his presentation yet, but he made an exhaustive presentation the time he came in for the special permit. We have heard about this project many times. And if there's no one in the audience to discuss this in particular, I might suggest to Mr. Perry that we are okay without another presentation.
I second that.
I second that, I second that.
I think we're going to disappoint David, though.
Yeah, I know, he's, he's all ready to go.
Waiting.
I won't say anything.
Again, I think we were all very appreciative of the effort he put in the first time around. In getting a special permit, we thought we were going to be able to do the side deck as well, but we realized that that would require variance. I think the variance, based on what he has been able to show in his neighborhood, is really just a modal variance, is really, all he's asking for is what's common in his neighborhood. And I would be happy to entertain a motion to grant his variance.
I'll, I'll support it and, uh,
I will second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the variance by Andrew, seconded by Mike Robbins.
Oh, oh, he, uh, he raises, uh,
Oh.
Dave raised a good point, we should close the public hearing.
Oh. So the first motion I want to entertain is to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Anyone want a second? Debbie seconds.
Can I just say, but if you don't say anything, does that give me the right to say something?
David?
I, I, I know, but I don't want you to sort of, if someone has a problem, me not being able to address it.
I don't think anyone has a problem.
All right, okay.
Trust me.
Okay.
So, all in favor of closing the public hearing? Aye. Motion to approve his variance. Anyone?
Mr. Chair, make a motion to, uh, approve Mr. Perry's variance.
For the side porch, which will encroach
Side porch, uh, side setback of fifty.
By two feet.
Yeah, can I, I need to make a comment here.
We've closed public hearing.
Okay.
Per the plan submitted with his application.
But, like, I need to make a comment here, please. Okay, it's, I don't, please don't say that the variance is for the side porch, because I, I might want to cut back and simply be, build a side deck, which is another option, it's less expensive.
A side structure that will encroach on his side yard setback by two feet, per the site plan with his application.
Can you do something different than the porch?
Porch, porch deck, I think we're okay.
Structure, two feet.
Per the plan.
Per plan.
So moved. Second?
I'll second.
Debbie will second. All in favor of granting the variance? Aye. Mike made the motion. Yeah, thank you, David. Getting there. Should we take a quick break?
That's just what I was going to suggest. I move that we take a break for five minutes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Fantastic, we are adjourned for, or on hold for five minutes. Okay, we are back in session, and we are on to Ninety-Seven Main Street, Quality Framing. If Spennelli will read the notice. That's okay.
Quality Framing Contracting, Inc., Ninety-Seven Main Street, Southborough, Mass. The Board of Appeals of the Town of Southborough will hold a public hearing in the Thomas J. McGoliffe Hearing Room of the Southborough Townhouse, Seventeen Common Street, on Wednesday, October seventeenth, two thousand and eighteen, at eight p.m. with regard to the petition of Quality Framing Contractor, three twenty-eight Mill Street Extension, Lancaster, Mass. The petitioner is seeking a special permit to construct an additional detached two-car garage for a newly constructed home with an attached three-car garage. This would exceed the maximum of three vehicles by two. Relief is requested pursuant to section one seventy-four, eight dot two B twelve, private garage or parking for more than three vehicles that is accessory to a permitted principal use on the same lot as such use. A copy of the application may be reviewed at the Office of the Building Department located in I. Cordova Road, Southborough, Mass. during normal business hours. Craig Nicholson, Chairman.
Okay.
Good evening, Peter Bemis, Engineering Design Consultants. I'm here on behalf of Quality Framing Contractor. That's Keith Gilchrist. Keith is to the left in that rear row, second, and his customer is Mr. Isabel, and that's to his right. This home is being constructed for him at this lot. So for locusts, the illustration to the right here shows Windermere Drive, and in pink it shows what the two-acre lot looked like back when we had that red salt box on there for all those years. That salt box has been razed, Mr. Gilchrist's home is going up now, and this lot has been divided into two parcels, and it's the parcel to the right that we're talking about on the east side. So the left illustration shows what that lot looks like, it's a one-acre parcel. It shows the dwelling that's under construction, it has three garages on it. In yellow, it shows the driveway. In pink, it shows the proposed accessory structure, two-car garage. In green, it shows an abreviated screen that we're proposing. So again, the zoning district here is Res A, so we have to have a one-acre minimum, which this has. We meet all of the front, side, and rear yard setbacks for the principal structure as well as a freestanding garage. It's our belief that we don't adversely affect any abutting properties. The board may by special permit allow more than three stalls, and we would be increasing that by the two proposed. We don't feel as though that's a detriment to this Main Street or Windermere neighborhood. There are a number of properties here with large driveways and with large garage areas, and the two-car garage doesn't derogate from the intent or purpose of the bylaw. The property continues to comply with all zoning requirements, and as a way of trying to offset our impact to this property, we do propose the abreviated screen along the boundary. Those would be eight to ten-foot tall, green giant, abreviated, planted ten feet on center, so that we can basically just screen out the use along the common lot line. So be happy to answer any questions.
Yep. I was just, sorry, I just wanted to, you were here before, what, if anything, is different other than the abreviated?
Basically, it's that same proposal that we had had, we just wanted to try to offset the impact to the abutter's property.
Okay. And how, you know...
You're the abutter, correct?
Yeah.
Would you like to comment on?
Yes, I would.
And just introduce yourself and address and everything again, yeah?
Okay, good evening, my name is Jack Kansaneri, I'm the resident at Ninety-Five Main Street. We abut Ninety-Seven Main Street, and my wife, Mary Antinelli, and I are the two individuals that live in that house next door. I'm going to be explaining to you the reasons why my wife and I object to this structure being built as owners of the abutting property. Before explaining our thoughts in that regard, however, as I did the last time, and then that hearing didn't result and it was withdrawn, I wanted to reiterate at the outset that I've spoken to the prospective owners, and they're gracious people, and I feel badly that, you know, I have to disagree at the outset of, you know, them being neighbors about this, but I'll say again that regardless of the outcome of this, this doesn't impact our commitment to being good cordial neighbors, it's simply that my wife and I have strong feelings, very strong feelings, that this issue, about this issue, and we've thought long and hard about presenting these, knowing that it's a special permit and knowing what your standards are, but we feel that we need to articulate our concerns, so that's what I'm here to do. In presenting this to you, before I left the house, my wife told me, she said, "Jack", she says, "Don't be overly technical, explain, you know, from the heart parts of this." So I will explain some of her thoughts about this from the heart, which is that we moved into this property fifteen years ago, we moved to Southborough because we loved the character and the open space here, that's why we moved there, and we picked that house at Ninety-Five because of the backyard and the fact that there was three acres of rolling grass with a backdrop of forest there, which we could see. And we, over the years, have enjoyed, you know, turkeys, and to some extent, deers coming in our backyard, and turkeys come in our backyard on Thanksgiving itself, which we find to be ironic, and so we've enjoyed that whole open space and that appearance. So that's a big deal to us, because this changes that, and I'll give you more on that in a moment. So I don't want to, through, even though I'm going to provide you a technical analysis, in any way undermine the extent in which there's extraordinary emotion and concern about this, it's deep. So with that, I will turn to the other aspects. I'm going to explain to you, you know, between now and the last time I've studied the standards, I know you got, you are all experts at the standards, I've reviewed those standards, and I think I understand now from two hearings that when you have a special permit, there's some thought process, this is me reading between the lines, that it's in, the standard is not as difficult to meet as the variance standard, and maybe it's the case that ninety-nine percent of the special permits you grant, and maybe that's the reason why people think that when there's a special permit, they're going to get it. Maybe this is the one percent that you don't grant it, and I've looked at the standards, and I'm about to explain to you why we believe that the petitioner hasn't come close to meeting its burden of proof under your guidelines that you apply for special permits. So, in conjunction with that, I have two handouts, and I'll give those to you now. First one. Have you also provided a copy of this to the applicant? Also here at the hearing is the abutter from one oh one Main Street, Mr. Mahoney, who I'm also providing a copy of this to. Okay, so there's two parts to what I'm going to present to you, I'm going to present my understanding of these standards. What I understand is that when there are guidelines and bylaws, and I know you know this, when the rules are clear and unambiguous, you follow those, and there's no room for interpretation, and when they're ambiguous, you're within your reason to interpret them. So I do understand that. I do understand that when you have campaigned or bid to be in this position, many of you have talked about the fact that Southborough and its character and the open space, and even today in some regard, I hear commitment and intent to preserve that. So this is a small aspect of that, because it's, you know, in this specific area next to my house, but to the extent that you have discretion, I'd ask you to be mindful of what you have said in coming to this board. This is where the rubber hits the road, where you use your discretion to apply that and determine whether in fact this is problematic under your guidelines and that the petition should be denied. So, the town zoning bylaws at one seventy-four dash nine entitled Special Permit Requirements identify several elements of proof that a petitioner must prove to obtain a special permit. Based upon our analysis of the bylaws, there are six issues that should form the basis of this board's analysis and decision on this special permit. The first three issues that I'm about to explain to you are interrelated, as I see it. Did the petitioner demonstrate that the building, building a structure that results in five, five side-loading garage doors facing our backyard is not, quote, "substantial detriment, not offensive to the neighborhood, and not destructive of property values"? Did they prove that tonight? Did the petitioner demonstrate that the building structure that results in five side-loading garage doors facing our backyard is a benefit to the town for purposes of balancing criteria posed in the remaining questions? Three, assuming for the sake of argument, petitioner can demonstrate granting this special permit is a benefit to the town, and they've defaulted in that. Is any such benefit outweighed by any adverse effects for the town and the vicinity? And that's both based upon the considerations that you deem reasonable and based upon the specific considerations that the bylaws mandate be considered, because you have general considerations and specific, I understand that. So one, two, and three are combined. My position is that if you have, from an analytical perspective, if you have detriment, something that's offense to the neighborhood, you have the slightest indication of that, and the other side has not proved any benefit, they fail. They need to, they need to pass the balancing test. Perhaps in most special permits, you don't have so many expressing with the intensity and the evidence that I'm going to present to you, the adversity. You've had nothing presented to you that shows the benefit. So my reading of these bylaws is the special permit should not be granted where you see some, any level of adversity, because there's nothing that's been demonstrated that's a benefit to the town by building five side-loading garage doors that face my property. There's been, there's nothing there, nothing special that makes us feel that it should be granted. Those are the first three criteria. The fourth issue is one that really divides into three parts, and it comes from one seventy-four point nine A, one A. Next, each one of these, I've given you the citation from the bylaws where I got the indication. So, did the petitioner demonstrate that the proposal, which will result in five side-loading garage doors facing our backyard, is the norm in the neighborhood? Why did I say norm? That's because when I'm reading the bylaws, they say that it is located near uses which are similar to the proposed use, so we'll talk about that. Mr. Bemis said that he believes that it's, in this area, there's large driveways. He said he believes, so that's actually not evidence, that's his belief. I'm going to present you with evidence. B, if not, did the petitioner prove that nearby uses should be ones likely to benefit rather than be damaged? So, if they don't prove that it's the norm in the neighborhood, then we say, okay, did you prove in the alternative that nearby uses would be benefited from this rather than damaged? And then C, it looks to, if nearby uses would not be benefited, have they demonstrated that by planting a row of eight to ten-feet-high abreviated trees, our backyard will be permanently buffered from a seventeen-foot-high detached garage, which for some reason today they're calling a carriage house, which I know from our meetings is different than a two-car garage, so I'm very uncomfortable that they're looking and putting up there a carriage house. It's a two-car garage with no second story, no windows, that's what it should be. Anyways, getting back to this. If not, did the petitioner demonstrate that by planting a row of eight to ten-foot-high abreviated trees, our backyard will be permanently buffered from a seventeen-foot-high detached garage facing our backyard that is setback, as I understand? facing our backyard that is set back, as I understand it from the items here, the plan, except 25 feet from the proposed 10-foot-high abreviety trees? I don't think that that will be demonstrated, but I'm not there yet. Number two, if so, so even if that barrier, buffer, would block sight of the garage, and I don't think it would, did the petitioner demonstrate that the installation of this permanent buffer, high enough to screen the 17-foot-high garage and five side-loading garage doors, will not result in an adverse impact comparing, adverse impact comparing what to what? Comparing the pre-existing decades, and at least since I've been there 15 years, of the status quo, which was three foot of rolling grass against the backdrop of forest, which I could see from my house in foliage, to this use? They can't meet that standard. Number five, "Did the petitioner demonstrate that the proposed use serves housing needs of local residents"? I don't think they're trying to meet that standard. That standard's not met. Number six, "Did the petitioner demonstrate that the proposal, as relates to site arrangement and building design, quote, 'considerably treats scenic views from developed properties'?" So now I'll explain to you why I do not think that they've met their burden of proof in relation to each one of those points. To, before I begin explaining the reason why I believe that this special permit is the one that you should deny, even if it's 1% of your special permits, this is the one, is because they don't meet number one, two, and three. Number one is substantial detriment, not offensive to the neighborhood, and not destructive. Please turn to page three of the handout. That's the one that starts with this table, but three is actually where we should start. So on the plan that the engineer presented to you, I have annotated where I've taken photos. So I've done my best. I'm not an expert at this. I'm sure Mr. Bemis's locations are with mathematical permission. Mine are approximate. So at the bottom, you see the long gray line. That's my house. As you can see, it's set much closer to the road. Number one from patio, that's going to be the first photo we look at in a moment. Number two, that's 20 feet from the patio. Number three, all the way over to the top, that's left of a maple tree that's there. And there, and by the way, if you continue up with your eyes, you'll see a blue pool. And then number four is the one from the middle of the yard, just looking really set back a little bit. So those are the four vantage points we're about to look at. So let's look at the first picture, please. So when you're at my house, when you look through, inside of my house, through sliding glass doors, which we put there so we could see the backyard, they weren't there when we bought the house, there was only windows, we would look in the backyard, of course, we would see, we would see where the house is, there would be rolling grass, and we'd see forest behind there. We accept, just so you know, we're not here to contest the house. We get it. That house is there. That's part of their right. They built it. We're not talking about that part. We're talking about everything to the right. So do you see the remaining forest that I get to see? The reason why we came to Southborough? The reason why my wife has such sadness about this, where the turkeys used to come out of that area there? We look through our backyard, and we used to see that. Now, instead of that, and I don't have the skill to, you know, manipulate this to put a garage there, but you can imagine 16 feet from the end of that house, there's going to be then a 24-foot garage that's there. And then in between there, there's going to be 10-foot-high trees. So I thought of this earlier today. It's like you're taking a picture, and there's a bunch of little kids in the foreground, and there's a bunch of adults in the back. The little kids in the front, let's say it's a kindergarten class, do not create a screen to the huge structures in the back. 10-foot-high trees do not screen that 17-foot-high garage. In addition, they do screen from the forest. So between the garage and the fact that it's 16 feet from the house, and it's at an angle, it's actually angled, so it exacerbates it. That's the issue with a garage wrapping around. So I wanted to let you know, from the interior of my house and from the patio, that's a dramatic difference. This one here is when I take about 20 paces forward, and you could see a little more closely. You see the three-car garage, and you see that space there. That's the space where the garage is going to be. That little bit of forest you see, going to be blocked. It will no longer be seen. Next. In the last hearing, I explained to you that I was very concerned.
Sorry, all right. So just to be clear, picture number two.
Yep.
The garage, as I'm looking at the house, that corner, the garage you're proposing would be to the right of that, blocking out the forest.
As we're looking at the house, at the garage door is facing us to the left, yes, it'd be to the right of that.
All right.
Yes. 16 feet off with the 24.
Got it.
Yep. The next, at the last hearing, I'm not going to elaborate in as much here, but I'm going to just pause for a minute. At the last hearing, I talked about my concern about drainage, because there's a massive difference between the amount of coverage of this lot comparing the way it was before to the way it is now. Some of that's because of the size of the house, some of it's because there's two houses, some of it's because the driveway is so many more times longer, and it wraps around and it goes to the back. All this pavement on one acre on a lot that used to be three to four feet below mine, four to five feet lower than mine, now that's been raised. So you see the tons of dirt, yards of dirt that have been put there that create that elevation. And you see Mr. Mahoney's house there in the distance, the White House in the distance. So that's where the garage will be. If you were in that spot, that garage would be facing smack dab at you.
Quick question on this sheet here. You've asterisks some of the number of garages. What's the meaning of the asterisks?
Well, when I get to that sheet, and I'm not there yet, because I'm going to rebut Mr., I'm going to rebut Mr. Bemis's claim that there's any consistency to that, but the asterisk there, Mr. Robbins, is because I'm reasonably sure that that's correct. I just didn't want to jump ahead. I'm sorry that I presented that in that manner. Then when you go to the next picture, sorry for presenting that again. I didn't mean to do that. The next picture, number four, is, this is one that really gives you a sense, I'm in the middle of my backyard, and I have the camera facing what used to be, you would see just the rolling grass and the trees, and now you're going to see what I'm talking about here. It's dramatically different. We do understand that the house is there, so be it. The house is set very far back into the lot. That's the decision and discretion they had. They said, "We're going to put it there." But in addition to that, you have then a garage that's going to be in that area. So those are the things that relate to question number one. Issue number one is, "Did the petitioner demonstrate that building a structure that results in five side-loading garage doors facing our backyard is not a substantial detriment, is not offensive to the neighborhood, and not destructive to the property values"? That property is not worth more, my property is not worth more because they're going from building the house that would have been there without the two-car garage to adding the two-car. That does not add value to my house. Somebody would rather live in my house without having to see that garage there, regardless of whether there's 10-foot abreviety trees in front of it or not. It obliterates that aspect of the view. So it's a detriment, and it's offensive to the neighborhood for that reason, and it doesn't, there's no demonstration, and they have the burden of proof, that it is going to help property values. I already understand someone would say to me, "Yes, but check, this beautiful house, and it's going to be a pristine, beautiful house, is going to increase my property value." So be it. That's not what we're here to talk about. We're talking about the garage, the two-car garage that's being added. Does that increase the value of my house? It does not. It doesn't. Just the house does. So I'm saying that my position is that with regard to issue number one, you did not come close to meeting that. They haven't proved it. Number two is, "Is a benefit to the town for purposes of the balancing criteria, is the town somehow benefited by this structure having five-car garage instead of a three-car garage"? Okay? There is no benefit that's been demonstrated. I don't even think they said it would be a benefit. So they defaulted. So that brings us to three, which is when you do your benefits analysis. Does the, assuming that they did, you know, demonstrate some benefit, does the benefit outweigh the adverse impact to the vicinity? I'm saying to you, on that basis alone, without more, like I wouldn't, theoretically, I could stop presenting, you could rule and find that the special permit should be denied. There is an adverse impact. There's no demonstrated benefit of, a benefit to the town. That's the special permit analysis that's in your bylaws that's supposed to guide the discretion that you use in the context of your belief in open space and the character of Southborough. So now I go to the, what I understand are the special considerations, the special factors. Issue number four, the norm in the neighborhood. Did the petitioner demonstrate that the proposal, which would result in a five side-loading garage doors facing our backyard, is the norm of the neighborhood, that it's located near uses which are similar to the proposed use? And so now I'm addressing Mr. Robbins's point, and I'll ask you to please look at this table, and I'll explain this to you. So what I've done is I've used both a combination of visual and public records to get the data that's in here. Where there's asterisks, it's because, either because I didn't see the garage personally, and I was unclear, but the data indicated it, but that's what the asterisk is. The only asterisk where there's really a level of uncertainty is 116 Main Street, but I'll explain that to you in a moment. So this is the neighborhood, and what I tried to do was capture in the immediate area. So if you go up and down Windermere, as you can see, I've put in red each house that has garages in excess of three, so four garages or more. 13 Windermere and 12 Windermere are the two houses that are at the very end of Windermere. They're right at the end of the circle there, okay? Beautiful houses. They're on two and a half acres and four and a half acres. They have four-car garages at the end of that area. Then you go all the way down, and there's, the rest of the houses are on one to five acres, they're on two- or three-car garages. Then you come to seven Windermere. That's the house that's in the middle of Windermere essentially, and that's on six, nearly six acres. It has a four-car garage. It's not one acre looking for a five-car garage. It's on four acres looking for, five, six acres, excuse me, looking for a four-car garage. Then you look at the remaining houses on Windermere until you get to one, and they're all three-car garages, and they're on one to two, three acres in that range. So that's what the norm is on Windermere. And then you come to one Windermere. One Windermere is an incredible property from the perspective of being a mansion, okay? It's, it probably has, I don't know how many bedrooms, 20 bedrooms, you know, five, 10 bathrooms. It has a whole thing. I know that when I read the article about it, it had a gifting room, where they had, actually had a spousal room to wrap gifts. Great. Well, that house, which is three acres, 3.1, and they bought, when they bought that house, they consumed some of that property around it so that they could have an estate big enough to handle this, has a six-car garage, okay? But that car garage, I was going to bring a picture of that, but I chose not to because I didn't want to overburden you. If you're standing on the street and you're looking at that property from any angle, that property is big enough. Nobody sees it. It's all screened in. No, the house that's immediately to the right of it, two Windermere, doesn't see it, nor does four, or two-way, and I don't see it from my property. So that brings us to Main Street. I changed colors. Main Street has, what I did, and I know the numbers are, seem odd, that's because I tried to aggregate them so that they're going, if you look at 97 Maines in the middle, this is going east. So if you went from 95 up to 83, that's going east. So if you look in that area there, they're all one to one and a half acre lots, and they're all two-car garages. There's no, people don't even have three-car garages in those areas. So that's nine houses to the east, and notice 95 is there. That's the abutter. That's me. Then you go the nine houses west, so that's going up to near Chestnut Hill Farm Road, just shy of that. There's 101 Main, that's the abutter. That's Mr. Mahoney, who's here. Two-car garage, 1.8 acres. And then here you have a couple of three-car garages. 122 has a four-car, but it's on two acres. That one should have been in red, by the way, so you can make a mental note. 122, four cars, but it's on two acres. So my point to you when you're looking at this, and when you see the yellow 97 Main Street and red there, is to kind of graphically show you, instead of it just being numerical order, because I just tried to show you, when you're looking east and west from there, you're basically seeing no garages of that size on one acre. And I do recognize 116 Main Street has the asterisk there. That's another house that's a beautiful house that's on 3.7 acres, right on the reservoir, right on the reservoir, and they may well have a three, four-car garage. I have no idea. It's, I looked it up. It's not available, and I can't see it from the road. So going back to issue, and by the way, the next page is this map. That's what I wanted to give you so you would see where those data are drawn from. So if you look at this next page, which is the map, you see my house, which is a couple inches from the bottom, 95, you see 97, which is being subdivided now. This is basically all the houses in that area, okay? And I stopped there to the right, in case you're wondering, because that's Sears Road. So turning back to the discussion, "Did the petitioner demonstrate that the proposal in question is located near uses which are similar to the proposed use"? They didn't demonstrate to that, and in fact, I'm presenting evidence to you that there are an aberration in this community, in this specific area. If not, "Did the petitioner prove that nearby uses should be ones likely to benefit from this rather than damage"? No. I've explained to you why it's a problem for us, why it's a detriment. And it's a detriment in the context of Southborough being a community that has character with regard to open space. C is the two parts. Have they shown that the abreviety trees will be permanently buffering this? They haven't shown that. I don't understand the math of how an eight to 10-foot tree would completely mask this. There's a height differential that just, it can't handle that. But even if it did, and I don't think it will, and there's been no demonstration that it will, but even if it did, you still need to look at balancing. Is the medicine, this buffer that they're creating, worse than the problem? No. The problem is the two-car garage. That's the problem. The buffer doesn't eliminate the detriment. It mitigates it. It doesn't eliminate it. Five, I've discussed, they're not attempting to show that this serves the housing needs. And number six, site arrangement and building design, I'll talk about that briefly. For whatever reason, they built this house very deep in the lot. It's very deep in the lot. And then you have on top of that this garage that's deep. So from our perspective, we don't think that they've proved that the site arrangement and building design considerably treats the scenic views from developed properties. So for all those reasons, I'm concerned about, I think you should be concerned, about precedent. You're setting a precedent if you find that in this particular area, it's okay to put five-car side-loading garage doors on one acre as here. That's a precedent. That means I can do that. I can build my land up four feet. I'll bring in yards and yards of dirt, and I'll create a three-car-facing garage that way, and Mr. Mahoney can do that, and everybody else can do that. It's out of the character. Special permit should not be granted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, you may. Thank you. So the first thing I just want to point out was the exhibit, we had shown you this at the last meeting, and I didn't show you tonight. This was just to show you the architectural consideration that's being afforded here with the structure. It's not going to be more than 17 feet high. It's got two garage doors. It's a small two-car detached garage. That's just the description that's on it. It says carriage house plan with elbow room. That's got nothing to do with the proposal. Just happens to be the way it was described, and I think if I told you the last time, I put the white paper here because the back of it keeps going. The idea was just to show you what the character was of the structure. So there isn't a second floor to this. It's just a one-story garage. What I'd like to first start with is that there are a number of points regarding special permits. I'll go through them. Some of them just aren't applicable to people when they're putting garages on their homes. And what's probably most important about the abutter's property is that he's on the corner of Main and Windermere, and the abutter does have a row of evergreens that are actually affording him privacy along Windermere Drive, because his backyard basically would be exposed to Windermere Drive going all the way up. And so that's why we actually came up with the concept of putting in the abreviety screen or the evergreen screen along the boundary. I'm proposing to put a garage that's within his visual shed of his back property, but I mean, this is our property. We bought the property. We've developed the property. The property was for sale. If the abutter wanted to preserve the florifonic considerations that they had enjoyed, they had the ability to purchase it from that abutter that was here at 97. That family had that house for sale for a number of years. They opted not to do that. Mr. Gilchrist came forward, and he purchased it, and the prior party actually divided the lot into two parcels, so there was going to be two lots, two homes going here. So there was gonna be two lots, two homes going here. We wanted to try to, you know, buffer this. As you know, we, we had a meeting the last time and my goal was to try to meet with the abutter and try to shake this out so before we do it here. And, and I did do, went forward, I did propose that. I knew that they still weren't satisfied, so that's why I have to kind of deal with this now here at the meeting. But, but that consideration that, that they have designated on their property to preserve their privacy along Windermere Drive is the same consideration we're offering along our boundary so they can preserve it. The driveway can continue to occupy that spot. So, so Mr. Isabel, when he lives here and enjoys this property, he, he can have his driveway here and he can park his cars there. You're gonna see his cars without any evergreen screen. So the, the visual impact that exists today will probably be even more onerous and more burdensome down the road. The idea is to be able to house those vehicles and that's why proposing to put the garage in. So I think it is important to consider the fact that we are meeting all the zoning requirements with this. I think earlier this evening, you actually entertained additional garages on a half acre lot. So it's not extraordinary that we're coming in and asking for additional garages on a one acre lot. Some of the other lots here have four and five or six acres. Some of the other lots here that haven't been described are directly opposite ours. Those homes are even probably 300 feet off the road. So there is a character that changes as you go along Main Street, as you go along Windermere Drive. I know my exhibit doesn't show it, but if you go up a bit further, there's a driveway that goes across the entire front plus the entire back of that building. So there are different differences between properties and how they, they interact. This is one of the, you know, the older homes that was developed here. It's soldiered right up against the front of the street. Some of the others along the street do the same, some are set back more. Our consideration here is, is that we trot, we're trying to put a visual separation of an evergreen belt between our proposed garages and our abutter's property. Because that's basically the only thing that I can do, other than putting up a board fence or something, which is definitely not going to screen it out entirely. The 10 foot, the 10 foot abrevites, it's a green giant. It's a tree that grows fairly quickly. And it is, is very lush. The deer do not eat it. That's the other good thing about this plant, is it will be a very effective screen. So over time, they will not see the proposed garage, the existing structure that's there. That's basically the best thing that I can do as a designer, to try to offset the impact that this structure has. But from the, from the public way, we're set back. I'm not being detrimental to any other party in my neighborhood. My direct abutter, from where his house is and where he put his screen door in and where he can sit in his home, that's the view shed that he wanted to protect and preserve. That happens to be where this house got built. And I can't change that. I want to just go through the points because it's being stated that we do not meet your special permit standards and I do believe we, we do. So the proposal should be located near uses that are similar to the proposed use. My single family home is very similar to what's going on all around me. There may be some accessory apartments out here that I'm not aware of that are in accessory structures. I don't know about any of that. I don't believe there are any here. Our structure is going to be just a two car garage. It's not gonna afford any other living arrangement. It is strictly a two car garage. That's it. And there are a number of other structures around here that have more than three cars at their property. The next item is adequate water and drainage. I have no problem with you imposing a special condition here that states for the record that there will be no water from this property being discharged on the abutter's property. There will be none. I can tell you that from the site plan, but I have no problem with that condition being imposed. The site should be able to accommodate the proposal without substantial environmental damage to wetland loss, habitat disturbance, or damage to valuable trees or other natural assets. There are no trees that were violated for the proposal in the vicinity of the abutter's property. We're actually suggesting that we plant some there. I would state that the, the flora phonic considerations in that rear yard are gonna be unchanged. The turkeys, the deer, they're gonna still migrate through that yard regardless of whether we're there or not. I can assure you of that. Because I've just, I witness it when I go out here. The, the critters are gonna stay there. We're not a non-residential proposal, so activity mix doesn't apply. Residential proposals serve housing needs. It's not applicable. So I just don't have to deal with that item too. Item three, visual consequences. Scenic views from public ways, developed properties. The only developed property that is affected is my direct abutter. He had to deal with the same issue along Windermere Drive. His solution was an evergreen screen. I'm matching that same solution with what I'm, what, what the condition is gonna be on his western boundary. So his eastern boundary already has a driveway that serves a number of homes. What did he do to protect himself? He had an evergreen screen put in. We're doing the same thing for our one single family house. Visibility of parking and service areas from public streets. Again, this is not gonna be visible from the street. It, it is protected. The proposed garage area would be a parking area if it's not a garage area. That much I can assure you. Mr. Isabel has vehicles, he's gonna need to park them. That's where he's gonna park them, is in that, that side yard. So we're gonna be at the same place with or without the proposal going forward with the evergreen screen. So from my perspective, I think it's important to consider that. And then the next item is, is a Route 9 issue. So it doesn't apply. Access, it pertains to growth. It doesn't really apply. Pedestrian movements and vehicle movements on the site again doesn't apply. Development rate doesn't apply. So there are limited provisions within the special permit granting section that you need to emphasize. The abutter brought up other points and, and emphasized those. I'm saying to you collectively, we don't derogate from the intent of the bylaw. The bylaw states what the side yard setbacks are, we meet them. The bylaw says that we can, through special permit, gain the additional garage spaces. And we are doing that by trying to mitigate what we're doing with our impact with our proposal here. And I'm saying you can further restrict that with the drainage considerations if you wish. I would be fine with that condition being imposed. That's it. Thank you.
Any other comments from, you go to the microphone, introduce yourself?
Hello?
Yep.
My name is Peter Maloney and I live at 101 Main Street in Southborough. And I am the abutter on the other side of the property that used to be a single family residence and now is to be two, two, two buildings. I, I offer no animosity to the, to the neighbors. I would like to, my wife and I would like to remain friends with all the people in the neighborhood. But I guess I am one miffed because I was told by the original seller of the house to me, which I bought 20 years ago, that everything in the area was two acre zoning. So I had no knowledge of the, the fact that the building next to me or the lot next to me could be divided. I thought it would remain just a single family home. And it was as, as Jack has said, the, one of the reasons I came to Southborough was because I love the open space and the beautiful surroundings and the beautiful town. The quietness of it all and, you know, I had hoped that it would remain as such. As Jack has noted, the, the wildlife in the area has always been, been great. There's deer and, and, and turkeys. Counting as many as 44 turkeys going through the backyard there at any one time. But I have to say, since the building has started, even on weekends when there is no activity over there, I have yet to see another turkey. I have, I haven't seen one since. But from my house, which you can see in one of the pictures here, I too can see the garage. And I, I'm just not sure why the need for, for five, five garages on one, in one house is, is a need and should be granted a special permit. The, the, the lot itself, there's two one acre lots, which I found out the hard way. By the way, you mentioned that the house was for sale for quite a period of time. While I never saw any for sale sign on the house in all the time that I was there until, until the property was being divided. That's the first time I ever saw a for sale sign on the house. So I, I did not know it was for sale and certainly didn't know it could be divided. But the, the things that I object to is just the amount of overall buildings on the property, the size of the structures and the, the space that it takes up. And there's very little greenery left after all is said and done. The, I'm sure, I haven't seen where the second house is actually going, but I'm sure it's gonna be very close to my lot line as well. They have raised the, the the dirt. You can see it in the pictures here. It must be 10 feet higher than, than it originally was, just in this one picture here. So I'm guessing I'm gonna get an awful lot of runoff onto my property. It's 10 feet, obviously that's a, that's a high, high mound that they have there. But if you go by the property now, it's at least three to four feet higher than it ever was before. But from my backyard, or from my house, I, I will be staring right at this garage. So I'm, I'm, I, I have to say I'm not in favor of it. There'd be very little view as well. And I'm just trying to see if there isn't anything else I wanted to add.
Mr. Malley, I, I do think we understand your, your point of view. Thank you.
That's it. Thank you.
Mrs. Luttrell?
Mimi Luttrell, 19 Oregon. Just a question. Did you get a stormwater permit for Concom for this?
Not at this point. We're getting this permit first and then we'll go there.
Oh, okay.
Waiting for that. I don't need to go there if I don't get the permit.
All right. So they're just questions that have come up on stormwater, so the Concom, we'll look closely at that. Thank you.
So I just want to correct one thing. So the grade was raised. The abutter has a raised septic system. If you, he doesn't show you a picture of that, but when he showed you where that septic was, or the pool. So his pool, the septic's beyond that. It's raised quite a bit higher than actually our property. We are in a similar situation. There's groundwater here, so we have to consider that. The house is raised about three feet above the ground where it was when it started. The grade in the backyard isn't gonna change. So there is, there's a transition from where the house is to the, to the front and it's, doesn't change along Main Street. So there, it's like you develop a lot of properties today, they have to be raised up for septic system considerations. And that is done here. But none of that water is gonna be shed towards the abutter's property. The drainage is actually all going to the north and to the west away from his property. That's why I said I'm, I'm fine with that condition being imposed because all the water is going to go away from his property.
Honestly, I think Concom's gonna deal with your drainage anyway.
Exactly.
Can you talk about the lot area coverage that you are getting to with this?
Yeah, I don't know if we can expect that number on there?
The max allowed?
Yeah, okay. I can give you, quote you that from zoning. So Walt put the FAR in at .18. So let me just see what.
Because again, I think one of the concepts is just the number of buildings and the number of structures or not necessarily structures, but how much of it is being covered by building as opposed to what's allowed? So that.
Yeah, he, he just listed the zoning maximum FAR at .18. So we're not even anywhere near that. Because if I was to give you that calculation, it's a pretty large house. That's why we have some of those large houses in town.
So I, I mean, I think the, the point there is that
Yeah, there is, there isn't one.
With the structure, the, you're still not
Not even close.
Close to the .18 FAR.
Correct.
Okay. Are there other questions on, up here?
Questions?
No. Okay. Any other questions or comments from the audience?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second. All in favor? Aye? How we?
No. While I'm very, very understanding of abutter's concerns with respect to additional structures on, on space. Because that's, the direct abutters are the ones that are affected clearly the most directly. To, to me, you know, here we are tonight. We've had a 3,000 foot garage, 3,000 square foot garage.
Across the street.
Across, literally across the street. Another two car garage. You know, to me, it's less about the substantial detriment and benefits. The town is, is it out of the character of Southborough? And it's hard for me to tell one property owner as opposed to another what they can or can't do. I mean, Peter and his clients, they could have built a much larger, just a bigger house that would have been essentially a larger structure and space than the house and the garage. But at the flip side, I do, I'm very understanding to the point where like, all right, you got a three car garage, you need another two. Where are we going with that as far as the town? And that's, that's, that's such a personal decision. But with respect to the standards, cer- certainly they might be detrimental to a direct abutter, but are they non-detrimental to the town at large? Who are we to decide what the benefits are? I mean, I, I live in a 1,500 square foot house. I mean, so these
Without a garage.
Without it, with no garage. Any garage would be fantastic. But at the same time, you know, I, I really understand, I understand the character. I understand having, when I came to Southborough, I was on a 99 acre farm. And talk about wildlife on that, that's all gone. You know, that, that part of Southborough's gone. It, it, it's not the quaint village that it was 30 years ago. At the same time, I'm, I really do hear abutter's concerns with respect to, give me a break, you need another two car garage. But does that not meet the bylaws?
Yep.
He could have just built a bigger house and there'd be, no one would be here tonight.
Debbie, any?
Yeah, I, I guess I'm, I'm, I think, I think it is something that has to be weighed and it's pretty difficult. I hear you. I'm, I'm struck by the language in the bylaw that says that the special permit shall be granted only if the special permitting authority determines the proposal's benefit to the town will outweigh any adverse effects. And then Mr. Kansaneri went through the different parts of this bylaw, most of which don't really pertain except location in my mind is the strongest. It's not, there's no visual consequences from the road and that others don't pertain. And so when we're thinking about the location, we have two abutters that are telling us tonight that this is detrimental. And I am, I haven't yet been serving on the board where we've had a special permit where both direct abutters have come, from my recollection, to, against. And so I'm, I'm struck by that and I'm, I'm feeling very much with them right now.
Yeah, so that, I think the point that probably resonated the most from Mr. Kansaneri is the, is the fact that this is, these are five cars basically on a one acre lot. I think his point is good that others that have been approved have been either in a larger lot or more screened and didn't have abutters coming and saying they're opposed to it. As Debbie pointed out, to have two there. And we, certainly, we've granted, you know, permits for garages above and beyond three. But I think this one, I take some, I take exception to because it is a small lot and it is so proximity to the neighbors. It's very close.
Yeah, I, I think Mr. Beam has very, made a very good presentation. Mr. Kansaneri made a very good presentation. But I think at the end of the day, based on what I've heard, it don't support the special permit application. And I think that I hope no one begrudges anyone else for doing this. I mean, the, the new owner had every right to seek, has every right to seek to do this. And you have every right to object to it. So I hope there's no, you know, bad feeling. So I hope there's no, you know, bad feelings that continue. I appreciate the comments that you made, that, you know, you're not looking to be good neighbors, but I'm just respectful of your rights as direct abutters to object to this, and I agree with what Debbie said. I don't remember a case where there was such strong objection from direct abutters to something like this, and then it was approved. And I was also, at the end of the last hearing, I was just interested to see whether you guys were going to kind of work out some type of arrangement, and since you haven't, I think that, for me, decides it.
I see it a little differently. You know, I think, you know, when you look at detrimental, yes, obviously, the two abutters and their views and their scenic views, and, you know, Mr. Kanzaneri mentioned three acres of rolling grass to woods. Well, he was benefiting of three acres of rolling grass that weren't his property. And that's fantastic that you got to benefit from it for a while, but it was never your property. The person there before could have put a fence there anytime they wanted, and that would have blocked your three acres of rolling grass into the woods. So, you know, towns get built, you know? New houses get built. This lot got subdivided legally. A new house is built. You know, the view's been affected already. Is it really being affected that much more, you know, for this garage? So I kind of view it a little bit differently that way. And, you know, I think as much as we might not have thought that Southborough is going to be the town that has multiple-car garages, it is the town that has multiple-car garages. We are, we're becoming that town whether we want to dig our heels or not. I mean, it's, there's multiple cars all around, multiple garages. And I don't think the special permit has anything to do with what size lot you are. If it's a legal lot, it's a legal lot. To say that, you know, now all of a sudden we have to say, you know, you can have a special permit for a second-car garage if you have more than the minimum required lot by X percent. That's not how it's written. You have a legal lot, you have the ability to do it per the special permit. So I'm kind of coming at it a little differently, in that, you know, things are going to change in Southborough, you know? They don't have to change dramatically, but to say that a second garage in this overall neighborhood is a complete aberration compared to the rest of the town and the rest of the neighborhood, I don't think it is.
But when you look at the ratio, it is the largest number of bays.
Right.
On the smallest lot.
True, but we don't, it's a legal lot. They have the same rights as anyone else with a legal lot.
But, I mean, you should note that it is a special permit, and we do have to apply our views.
I, I'm.
Our views.
Yeah, no, and.
It's not, it's not.
And as a five-person board, we all have our views, and we all, we all get to come to it. I'm just letting you know where I, I'm viewing it from. So.
Can I just have one moment with my client before you actually make a motion on a decision? Because I can do that. And I would like to just let them know what their options are.
I have no problem with that. Yep, go ahead.
Yes, a email. I have a question.
Should we give a recess?
I think this might be quick.
Where is this?
Two to one Boston in the second.
What's this called, Wes?
Two to one Boston in the second.
Okay.
Three to one in the third.
It's now three to one in the third.
Oh, we love that.
I moved open here, and I, unfortunately, my client is Mr. Gilchrist. I was going to make the presentation tonight. His buyer, Mr. Isabel, wanted the opportunity to speak. I didn't know that.
We need, sorry.
Sorry. You need a.
My call. Good evening. So what I was saying was that my client is Mr. Gilchrist. I was going to make the presentation this evening. As I said to you when I opened my remarks, Mr. Isabel is the party buying this property. He wanted the opportunity to speak. He's been a resident of Southborough for a number of years. He did move away from town. The reason why they selected this home was to move back to Southborough. He wanted the opportunity to speak, but I didn't know that. I just, and I asked my abutter, would he object if the board was to open to let Mr. Isabel speak? And if he says no, then I understand that. If he will allow him to, I would ask the board for the consideration to allow Mr. Isabel to speak. That's it, in a nutshell.
Are we open to that? I mean, I did ask if anyone else from the audience wished to speak before we closed it.
I don't, I don't have an opposition. I mean, not opposed, but to the chair.
Up to you. That's my view. I'm, I'm open to it. I'm assuming it will be relatively brief.
It will be relatively brief.
You're going to need a microphone. Are you okay with this, sir? I mean, we gave you an ample opportunity to, to lay out your case, and.
Craig, if I could just add, I think what Andrew would do in this situation, say, do you have something different? Like, if it's going to be, we're going over the old facts, then that's not going to happen.
Yeah, I think.
I have nothing, if you're asking me if I have.
You need a microphone, and.
If you are asking me, Warren Isabel, and I am the purchaser of the property on 97 Main. If you're asking me if I am going to add something of substantive fact here, I do not have anything to offer, other than the fact that I think Mr. Kanzaneri kept saying that the garages will, the doors will face his house. They will not. And secondly of all, the amount of square footage that will be impacted by this will be 480 square feet. It's 24 by 24. That's it. Thirdly, I have lived in Southborough. I think I've actually preceded some of these people in my tenure at Southborough. I lived on Ledge Hill for a couple of years, and then I moved to Presidential. And I was there from 1994 to 2013. There, I actually had five garages. I've had five cars for many, many years. I do not work on them, race them, or anything like that. I've just, I've just had them. That's just what I, one of my, you know, passions. And, you know, I thought that this would be a very idyllic setting, and I will make the property look as such. But I'm sorry that the deer and the whatever else is, are running back here are, you know, an issue. But that's really all we intend to do. There is no activity that is going to be going on. We're not petitioning for that. It'll simply be where the cars will be housed. Otherwise, they will be out in the open. That's all I really have to say. So I thank you for the opportunity, and I'm sorry to extend these proceedings further.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I make a 20-second?
I think, I think you've laid out your position adequately. Thank you. So, how are we, how are we feeling about this? I mean, it seems as if we're.
Is the, is the public hearing really closed?
I don't think we moved to close, did we? Or did we?
It was already closed. We just, we just allowed one person to speak.
I just wanted to make sure.
So.
I think there's two. We can vote, or, I mean, Mr. Bemis had an opportunity to speak with his client, and whether or not to seek to withdraw or not.
I offered that, and I, there's nothing to withdraw. I mean, they want the garages, and I've met with the abutter several times. I've spoken to him.
Yeah.
We have tried. I've tried to bridge a gap, and I don't believe I can do anything further, so, you know, you folks will vote. I hope Mr. Isabel's position, you know.
I don't know at all about any of these discussions. I have not met with this gentleman at all regarding this. So I just want you to be aware of that.
Okay.
Well, Mr. Isabel, with that said, as I said to you, we can continue this. It's your call, sir. As far as I'm concerned, it's your petition. Withdraw without prejudice. I offered you that.
Mike, again, I am not expert in these matters.
You need a, you need a microphone.
All right. Microphone.
Yeah, sorry. It's being taped and aired.
Warren Isabel, once again, I'm not expert in these matters at all. I understand that Mr. Bemis acting as the engineer has really conducted most of the negotiations, because he's more expert at being able to describe what and what we will not do. But I have not discussed this with Mr. Kanzaneri at any point. My understanding also is that if we withdraw without prejudice, we can come back to you with another petition.
Correct.
And I guess the, probably the best outcome from that would be the ability to continue to discuss this with.
Your neighbor.
Neighbors. On the other hand, I'm listening to both parties, which I had no idea that the other gentleman was even involved in this. And my feeling is, quite frankly, that he really is not an abutter, because the property's already been subdivided, and Mr. Gilchrist has purchased it.
I'm going to just, I think, so the, I'm just expressing my view. Since the answer was not a clear no, I think let's just vote.
Yeah.
And then we don't have to deal with this a third time. We'll just decide it.
Okay.
What, may I ask?
So I'm going to, I'm going to make a motion that we deny the application.
Second.
All in favor of denying the application? And opposed?
I do have the right to appeal. Is that correct?
I think the answer is yes.
Yes, you always have the right to appeal.
Thank you.
Mike and I. So we're on to the last public hearing, which is 2 East Main Street. I see familiar faces. And I will have Mr. Finelli read the notice. But I believe, we have heard a lot about this.
You've heard a lot on this.
And similar to our suggestion to Mr. Perry, who, Mr. Bemis, you might not have been here when we did it. I'm not sure we need an entirely new presentation on this, but we're going to read the.
Petition?
Read the petition and the public notice. And we'll open it up to, I'm assuming, a brief presentation.
I want to keep it very brief. It's late.
Yep. And then we will go into the discussion of special permit. You ready?
Watershed Investment Corp., 2 East Main Street, Southborough, Mass. The Board of Appeals of the Town of Southborough will hold a public hearing in the Thomas J. McGoliffe Hearing Room of the Southborough Townhouse, 17 Common Street, on Wednesday, October 17, 2018, at 8:15 PM, with regard to the petition of Watershed Investment Corp., 2 East Main Street, P.O. Box 290, Southborough, Mass. The petitioner is seeking a special permit to construct a mixed-use building that will consist of two and one-half-story building, and will include all permitted uses in Section 174-8.4B. The property is located in BV Business Village District, and will meet all setback, height, and floor area ratio zoning requirements. Relief requested is pursuant to Section 174-8-C2. The Board of Appeals may, by special permit, allow several different uses, if otherwise permitted, in district. A copy of the application may be reviewed at the Office of the Building Department, located at 9 Quodvile Road, Southborough, Mass., during normal business hours. Craig Nicholson, jam.
Mr. Bemis?
Yes. Good evening. So my only concern would be is that I want my application to be part of the permanent record for my, because this is a full application again. I'm almost starting all over again, so that's the part that I'm a little bit concerned about, and not saying everything that I need to say. But I just want to stress the provisions in the bylaw that I am seeking relief under is the highlighted section here. So you folks know that very well. We are Section 2, 174-8, 2, which gives the Zoning Board of Appeals the authority to grant multiple uses on a lot. And the uses that I'm looking for are those uses specifically identified in my underlying zoning district. And there are a number of them. You can give me all of them if you want. I told you I don't, it's up to you, folks. Some of them don't really matter to me, because I'm not going to have a cafeteria, and I don't need a night watchman or a janitor at the property. So those two, we could go away with, but I would take all the others, so we have the flexibility in entertaining anyone for that first-floor use. Again, the proposal is for a two-and-a-half-story structure, shown here. The second floor would be a hotel motel use. There would be four units, one bedroom. And the first floor, we've got the ability to have four tenants within that group. I did go forward and try to take another stab at the rendering that we had there, and we've tried to clean it up a little bit, so we have, you know, a lot more going for us. We will be going before the planning board with this proposal because of its size, so we're starting to go down, get ready for that path. The historic uses, I have the Hillcrest, that's that apartment building that's located on East Main Street. It preceded me. That's why the zoning allows hotel motel use in the village business. And there are a number of others still in the community. As I said to you, the Shamrock Motel, which is on Route 9, is still there, under that same provision. And then there are a couple others. So all I want to just state again is, for the record, that my full application, all 20 pages, is part of that record, and I'm not reading it in tonight in the interest of time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Bemis, could you drop the? No, we're going to have him drop the board.
Mimi Luttrell, 19 Oregon Road. I'm a member of the planning board, but speaking as an individual. So the application is for every use in the Business Village District? Is that what I'm to understand?
It is for the ability to have multiple uses. It is for the ability to have multiple uses, and of the uses would be ones allowed within the Business Village District, yes.
So, all of the uses?
That's the way the application reads. It's the Business Village District, and they would be appropriate uses.
So, we should go through every use and whether or not it's appropriate?
I don't know if that's necessarily needed because ultimately, this has to go through planning board. It will also have to be, a building permit will actually have to be issued. So, in order to get effectively used in some of these ways, it will have to pass state code and building code and things of that nature. So, I don't know if we need to go through every item in our Business Village District. My belief is that if it's an allowed use, it's an allowed use.
Well, so, this is a special permit.
Mm-hmm.
And as we were just given a primer on special permit in the last hearing, that the uses has to be compatible and fit within the neighborhood, and some of these won't...
But they are compatible because they're allowed.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, if they're allowed, how do we now say they're not compatible?
Well, so, like, major residential development is a use.
That's...
I mean, that will...
Not a multiple use. That would be one use on that site. That's not what the special permit is asking for. He's asking for the ability to have more than one use.
Correct. So, one use would be something, and another use would be hospital or nursing home in major residential development, or...
No, I don't think so.
Private garage.
I think he was specific in saying that. It's in 174-8B.
174...
It lists there what the permitted uses are. So, I, it's not, I don't think he's saying anything beyond that.
174...
You have the...
Yeah.
Yep, I mean, 1 through 7.
Retail, sales, and services, newspaper, job printing.
So, yeah. So, the ones he is asking in regards to, 174-8.4B, numbers 1 through 7, retail, sales, and service, which do not involve manufacturing on the premises, newspaper, job, printing, and publishing, office, bank, office building, hotel or motel restaurant, excluding drive-through, clinic or medical testing laboratory, dwelling on the premises for a night watchman or janitor, cafeteria on the premises for use by employees and not the general public. Those are the ones he's asking for.
So, this is a multi-use retail and residential, as it says in the app?
It doesn't say that in the app.
It does.
Not the one I'm reading. Permit multiple uses on same property, all as described in...
Read further into the description.
Description.
Is there a particular section you want me to...
Can I jump in here?
Yeah, go ahead.
This might help guide the discussion is that, I think the point you're making is that Mr. Bemis has come with an application which is very broad, right? And I think that you do have to decide, you do have to kind of specify what these uses are, because else how do you determine that they're compatible? I mean, he has given notice that on, I think it's the second page, in a description of possible outcomes, location, this development proposal is located within downtown Southborough, and the facility is being proposed as similar to the multi-business and multi-residential buildings in and within the downtown area. Nearby uses would benefit from having additional patrons from the second-floor hotel motel use component and the first-floor commercial use component. So, and those are both permitted uses. One of them is 174-8.4B, one, retail, sales, and services, which do not involve manufacturing on the premises, and another is 174-8.4B, four, hotel or motel restaurant. So, I think that since he's made this very, very broad request for relief, I think we could, one possible outcome is we could say, you know, after a discussion, that the, those two uses, second-floor hotel motel and first-floor retail sales, are compatible, and it does comply with the other provisions of the bylaw. He sought very narrow, he sought very broad relief. We can get, grant narrow relief from that.
Okay. So, I'll speak to the hotel motel. It's not a motel by definition because you can't drive up to your room on the second floor. So, it would be a hotel, which a four-room hotel is, I've never heard of such a thing before. You have to hire staff, provide lawn, linens, provide food, provide cleaning services. You're gonna do that for four rooms? And there's no such thing as a non-transient hotel in our zoning, as per town council. So, this would be a standard hotel for travelers, as per the definition of a hotel, which...
It's not defined in the code, though.
It's not defined in the code.
We just, we don't have that defined.
Correct. So, you go to a standard definition if it's not defined in the code, as per town council's letter.
Yeah. I also...
In the other, a couple of things. The EDC is spearheading a change in the zoning code to address this. So, they have acknowledged that this project doesn't work in our zoning. And thirdly, if there are residential dwellings, the setbacks and the frontage also don't work.
Actually, that's incorrect. I've discussed that with the building commissioner, and because it is for commercial use, and it is a commercial building, even if it is multiple use, it goes with the commercial code in regards to setbacks. He's very clear on this.
Perhaps he is. He was clear on other things, too, which I disagree.
I would appreciate if you don't disparage our building commissioner when he's not here to defend himself.
I'm not disparaging. You brought it up.
Yes, but I appreciate that.
Craig, if I could ask, I actually brought that up at the last meeting, and the building inspector did clarify. I went back and I looked, and I looked for some case law on that, and I wasn't successful. But I was wondering if we can get, I don't know if there's time, but if we could seek Aldo's opinion on that. Because from what you responded last time we met was that if it's mixed-use residential and commercial, then the hotel portion is the commercial use, and so you wouldn't need to follow the res, the village res B bylaws. But that's not actually what our bylaws say. It says mixed use, you have to, if there's residential dwellings in the mixed use, you follow res B bylaws. So, it's, to me, it's unclear. And I don't know if there's time or anything, but if we might get some clarification, because that does impact the setbacks on Newton Street.
Yeah. And again, I did have a detailed conversation with Mark about this. Where the residential setbacks would come into play is if the building, a mixed use on a lot where you have a standalone residential building, that building would then need to comply with the residential setbacks. But with a combined, one building, commercial and residential, even though this is a motel hotel, which is still a commercial use, would follow, that building would follow the commercial setbacks.
Is that, in fact, I spoke to Karen the other day, and we were trying to get some clarification on this. And I didn't speak to the building inspector directly, but is there, is that written anywhere? Because, so, what we're assuming is that the hotel portion is not considered residential. It's all commercial. But that goes against the nature of what we're doing here, is saying that this is really a mixed-use residential and commercial.
It is a mixed-use per allowable uses within the Business Village.
Yeah.
There is no multifamily apartment use within the Business Village District. He is not attempting to construct a single-family home as part of the mixed use. Therefore, all of the uses that he is entertaining are commercial uses. Through site plan, through obtaining the building permit, that will get addressed. I think what we are looking at is whether or not we believe a mixed-use project at that site is appropriate per the available uses within the Business Village District. That's our charter.
Okay. So, we're not gonna worry about the setbacks or anything that...
They still have to go through site plan?
Okay. Okay, thank you.
So, the only thing I'd like to add is on the uses, because Andrew did single out one use. I mean, there are others there that I think are important. So, I just don't want to get retail sales because, you know, if a printing company wants to be there, then I want to be able to entertain that. So, a newspaper, I don't think this newspaper is really a long-term business plan. But, I mean, if there's a printing job or publishing job, I would certainly like to see the ability to entertain that. And the office, bank, office building, I told you, Main Street Bank, everyone should go there. But my point would be is that I need to have the flexibility. Hotel motel, and then the clinic, medical testing, that's your decision. But 6 and 7 are just not applicable. I told you that in the application, and I still stand by that. But the other uses are the multiple uses that we're looking for to be at the site. Thank you.
Okay.
I don't want to speak for the petitioner, but I think that he cast a broad net because I think in our previous meetings, there had been a lot of back and forth with respect to his previous applications and the language. And so, I read his application as, here's what's allowed. Give me two uses.
Multiple uses.
Give me the, give me multiple uses.
And, I mean, just earlier tonight with that 154, where we didn't get down to what exactly is gonna go in there. I mean, it is, I think they have a point, saying he wants to be flexible.
Yep. Andrew?
Is there a basement in this building?
A basement?
Oh.
Is it on a slot?
I thought you were talking about this building, like downtown hall.
Is there a tornado coming we weren't aware of?
Do you want to grab a microphone?
Yeah, actually, you need to introduce yourself to ask the question.
I'm Betty McDeen. I live at 8 East Main Street. And I was wondering if there's gonna be a basement in this building.
Yeah, we don't have the building. Do you need me to shut this up? We haven't fully designed the building, but my guess is there's gonna be some mechanical space below. I don't see there being a full basement here. But there probably gonna be some mechanical space and what we'd call a basement.
Thank you.
I know I have a lot of different quotes from a lot of them on the Re-Utilization Committee, that they want a brew pub downtown. They want a yogurt shop downtown. I mean, how can you put a restaurant in and not have any storage if there's no basement or anything? I mean, they're pushing for a place that they can go late at night, and that will be open late, and they'll have a place to party in the center of town.
Yep. I appreciate that. It's not necessarily our job to have, tell the petitioner how to divide the space or what his tenants will use the space with. All we're looking at is whether or not this is an appropriate location to have more than one use within a building.
Hi, Mary Quirk, 11 East Main Street. So, if we give a special permit in this because we do want to see downtown get developed, are we setting any kind of a precedent for the rest of Newton Street to be developed into a Marriott hotel? Or are we setting any precedence by the village rules and regulations by giving this special permit?
I don't believe there's any precedent that we're giving on this.
Can I, I mean, just, there's also a height.
Yeah, there's still height restrictions. There's still FAR restrictions, floor area ratio, how much you can cover a piece of property.
Okay.
So, I mean, and then obviously, we're still in an area that is very close to a river, or for, not that you see it, because it's mostly submerged. But, you know, the Board of Health and the ability to have a septic system sufficient enough to handle, like, a Marriott or something, it's not gonna be on Newton Street.
Okay.
I think that would be, like, very unlikely.
You might just, you might, but motels and hotels are already permitted uses, so...
Right. That's what I'm saying.
So, all I'm saying is we're not really establishing precedent.
Okay.
Right.
Because that's what I don't understand. That's why I'm asking that.
And anything over 2,000 square feet needs to go to the planning board for review and permitting as well.
And final design, like Mr. Bemis was saying last time, obviously has to take place once he gets approached by people.
Yeah. So, all we're saying is you can go ahead and further develop your plans...
Right.
Knowing you can have more than one use in this building.
Okay. Thank you.
Of the allowed uses within the district.
But he will still have multiple steps to go through before he has it.
Right. And I'm not, I'm not saying I'm against this project because I'm not. I'm just wanting to really make sure that in the neighborhood other part of Southborough, that all we live in, that we're not now setting some kind of a precedent for other developers down Newton Street to do other similar projects.
It's great that you raised your concern. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Chris Robbins, 39 Parkerville Road. First of all, I want to thank Peter Bemis for stepping forward like other residents in this town who own most of the businesses downtown, like the Baltus family, like the Espazi family, like the Murrows. Who else? The English Garden, people who've been there for 20 years, the barber shop. These are people who have lived in this town and have stepped forward. And what I find personally frustrating when I see the permitting process, and I've sat on this board, and this year, I've seen a level of collaboration and intent to create a very thorough but speedy process. And there's been behind-the-scenes, positive constructive behind-the-scenes, even from selectmen, to get the planning board, the zoning board, the permitting boards, to work in a collaborative way to advance projects like this in a high-speed way that's very thorough. And if we're gonna attract people to this community, we shouldn't have to wait 20 years to get a new police department or to get this ugly sore spot fixed. So, I applaud what you all are doing, what Mr. Bemis has done. And I know people on the planning board are trying to work to get the right thing going forward. But we gotta keep the pressure on to do the right thing for the residents and for this community, but to set a new standard by which we measure how effective we can be as customer-service-driven permitting boards. Thank you.
Okay. Any other...
Are there any other public comments?
Well, any other, do we have any other questions of the applicant? I'll ask if anybody else in the audience wants to speak, or should we move forward and close?
I just had a comment just because Dave mentioned the 154, 156, and how we just approved it was sort of open, and that there was a document tonight that discussed that the applicant, or the inspector, sorry, the building inspector would inspect each of the units or something as it's rented or something like that. And I wonder if we would apply that protocol to this situation as well, if it's applicable.
I don't, I thought about that. I had that exact same thought.
Is it the protocol, I think, that was given from the planning board?
So, I understand where you're going with it. I think the difference is that at the 154, 156, some of the uses could be light manufacturing and a little more intensive with a lot of stored materials and kind of a, a potentially more... I don't know, I think, I think it's a different type of use out there with the light manufacturing and the storage and the, you know, construction, equipment storage and stuff like that.
And less visible.
And, yeah. That I think it's not the same level of concern. You know, there, it's like, what are you storing? You know, what are the materials you're storing? Are you, you know, do you have the proper things going on with how you built it out because of what you're doing? I think with, like, office retail, it's not the same level of concern.
But I do think there's a benefit to checking back in... But I do think there's a benefit to checking back in, because what we're asked to approve is something so open that the details aren't available to us unless they, unless the applicant circles back to us.
All it is is a notice provision. That's it.
Okay.
A note, sorry?
Just a notice provision, that's all it is. That after, you know, I mean, I think some thought has to be given to the hotel motel part, because there's no need to have a, you know, notification every time that it would be...
Somebody vacates for...
Yeah.
I think it, I think it would be...
So I'm, I'm still thinking it over.
I mean, I still think there's enough steps that they're going to have to go through to, you know, get the building permit, go through site plan, that...
That's right.
And, and the uses that could change dramatically are really, you know, per the current plan, with the hotel motel being on the second floor, are really the first floor. And again, those are retail, office. I mean, if there's a medical testing in there, that's going to have its own permits of, you know, clean areas and stuff like that. So I don't...
I mean, the logical question is, what if an existing building lost its tenant and somebody else moved in? What's the process there?
If they had to redo it.
Or is it empty and somebody has to redo it?
If they had to do a fit-out, they'd file a building permit to get the new fit-out done.
Yeah, they'd need to come see us.
So...
I think, to me, there's enough in place, I think.
I would think so, too.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions, or make a motion to close the public?
Well, I, I just, I, I had one thought just thrown out there from Mr. Bemis. So in terms of uses, that are permitted uses, that you would be willing, no, I'm not going to do this, right? I mean, I, it's useful in having a, a solid decision to at least eliminate some of those, because we're making a decision about what uses are compatible with each other. And, you know, it looked like you were going to ask for one through five. I mean, you know, I, I do think two could probably be eliminated. Newspaper, job printing and publishing, I mean, I don't, first, I don't know what job, job printing is, but...
Well, just a cop, a copier is the only thing I was concerned about, is that...
Yeah, and I think, you know, a publisher could be, I mean, quite honestly, if Beth Mello from the blog wanted to have an office space, she's a publisher, and, you know...
Okay.
I, I think it's...
If you're not going to produce newspapers there, there's not going to be printing presses.
I was just going to say, yeah.
There isn't, okay.
I, I always say, though, we don't know what the future's going to bring. I mean, the bell bottoms are back. I mean, like, newspapers might come back and vogue.
Right, maybe we'll just say no newspaper, job printing and publishing.
I think that's discrimination.
Ultimately, what, what it is, is if I just picked one of these uses, I, I can do all of them by, you know, by right through the, through the review process. The problem is, I'm trying to combine it with that hotel motel use, because, as I said to you, there's only, the only financially viable way of doing this is to have that component. I definitely don't want to have to do it, but I'm stuck, or, or I, I don't, this project isn't financially viable for Peter Bemis.
Yep.
That's the problem. And some franchise could certainly go here, they could afford to do those things. I can't do that.
So, but you are okay with six and seven being?
Yeah, six and seven can go away. Just one through five is what I was asking you for, and I, I'd stand by that.
So are we saying we want to condition it as items one through five?
Yeah. All right. Do we have a motion to close, close public hearing?
I have made a motion to close public hearing.
Do we have a second?
I second.
All in favor? All right. Would someone like to make a motion? I think we're generally down the path. Dave, Andrew, Debbie?
It's all you tonight.
You sure?
Yeah.
Why would it be on me? Okay, but just another, I think this is one, this is a kind of a matter where it might also help, we, we both on a decision, we also flesh out a little bit what a decision is going to look like, and what some of the findings are, and things like that.
Okay, so...
I think we can, uh, should we, I mean, should we say something like, I move that we approve the special permit with the permitted uses allowed in 178-4B1 through five? I mean, that's what you're looking for?
Yeah, but I just think that...
I think that, but then, I, I hear what Andrew's saying, is that, you know, that we've discussed this, and, you know, per the requirements of public hearing, or for the special permit, we've found that...
Ah, yes.
This type of development would not be detrimental to the neighborhood.
I mean, could we, could we say that, right?
Point well taken, yeah.
The decision, you know, we make a, a finding that...
Mm-hmm.
That, that with respect to this particular lot, that really, any combination of the permitted uses in 174-8.4B1 through five would be compatible with each other, and they would result in, and in, in, no, I'm just...
He's, he's in the findings, talking about findings.
And they would result in improved circulation and land use patterns. I mean, basically, out of common sense with that saying is, you have a building, you could have a hotel motel and an office. You could have a medical testing lab and a bakery. You could have an office and a medical testing lab, any combination of those. You know, there are buildings like this you see all over the place, given the state of downtown Southborough, any combination of those would be compatible with each other, and...
I wouldn't think that those uses would be detrimental or offensive to that, that area of town.
And harmony with...
So, you wanted, we, we could maybe just take a vote, we make that specific finding, and then we...
Mm-hmm.
All right, so, okay.
You can do that.
I move that in our decision, we reflect that we make a, a finding that with respect to this particular lot, any combination of the permitted uses specified in 174-8.4B1 through five are compatible with each other. They meet the requirements of 174-9, and that's...
Special permit?
Yeah, basically, you know, has a benefit to the town, and results in improved circulation and land use patterns. So I make a motion that we make a specific finding about that.
I second that.
All in favor of those findings?
So?
Yep.
Second?
Yes, Mike seconded.
And then I'll take a stab at the, the last one here, that we move to approve the applicant's special permit application to use any different combination of the permitted uses in 174-8.4B1 through five.
Second.
All in favor of this? All in favor?
Between the two that you just did.
So the findings are that we've, what we've determined that, what is, is request for a special permit is that the uses are compatible with each other. So we have to find that the uses that we're allowing will be compatible.
Explain or...
So...
Yeah, because you'll need to...
Yep. Okay, so, the last items on the agenda are the approval of meeting minutes. First section of the meeting minute approval process are the executive session meeting minutes from August 24th, 2016, November 9th, 2016, and December 14th, 2016. These were, these have been delayed in their approval through confusion of exactly how we needed to approve them, but we've since rectified that. In open session, we can approve the minutes, but we may not discuss them. So the question I have for the people that were in attendance, so Mr. Robbins, you were not at any of these. Debbie, you were at all but the first one, is are there any items within these minutes that need to be discussed? And if so, we will call an executive session at some time in the future to discuss them. And if there are no comments, then we can move forward to approve them as written. Debbie, do you have any comments on, that would need to be discussed on the two that you were attending at?
No, I do not.
David, do you have any comments?
No, I don't have any comments.
Andrew, do you have any comments?
I have no comments.
I have no comments. I would entertain a motion to approve the executive meeting minutes from October 24th, 2016, November 9th, 2016, and December 14th, 2016.
You mean August 24th?
I thought I said August 24th.
I said October.
Oh, did I? Sorry.
All right.
August.
August 24th, 2016, November 9th, 2016, and December 14th, 2016, as presented.
I second.
Great, you did it, Dave.
Yep.
Okay.
Apparently, that's good. All in favor? Abstain? Mike, Mike abstains.
I just want to make one comment. We've, we've approved these, but...
They will remain unpublished until such time as whatever is discussed is resolved. I think there's one of these where it's been resolved and can be, but that's not our, that's not our, that's not us, that's not up to us. We just need to approve that they were accurate. Moving on, meeting minutes from August 29th, 2018. They are lengthy. Hopefully, you read them beforehand and have any comments. Do you have ready to go?
So you have the September 19th?
August 29th.
I had, I had no comments on the minutes.
I do?
Oh, yeah, there we go.
Yep.
I just can't make it. I had no comments.
I think you were present. Andrew, any comments?
I have no comments. I, I did review them.
Yeah. I do not have any comments. Okay.
I move that we accept the meeting minutes as written for Wednesday, August 29th, 2018.
I second.
All in favor?
Okay.
All right. Yep. And meeting minutes from September 19th, 2018. A little shorter this time?
One second, I had no comments on these either.
I had no comments.
No comments.
No comments.
I make a motion to approve the September 19th, 2018 minutes.
Second that.
All in favor? All right, okay. Last thing we need to do is pick a date for November. We have an application for something.
For variance.
For variance for an indoor pool. Wow.
Yeah.
Okay.
Interesting.
November is going to be really interesting. Nope, that's January, too far.
Yeah.
I would say the 21st is out, is that the night before Thanksgiving?
I think that is definitely out.
You said...
Seventeenth, or I believe the 28th?
Uh, 14th or the 28th.
14th or 28th.
Yeah, let me get to November.
I'd rather do the 14th.
I have the 14th and the 28th booked. The room is booked. Probably, I'm leaning towards the 14th with that applicant, but...
Okay.
I'm going to have to turn around quickly.
I...
I'm traveling on the 14th. I'm away that week.
Well, this is where, well, look, I mean, Paul, Paul might be here. I mean, Paul, we expect that he'll...
Yeah, I mean, he was out sick today.
Yeah.
So, it's not that he wasn't available, it just would not have been pleasant to have him around.
Dave, you're out of time?
No, I'll be, I'm available for the 14th.
I am as well.
I, I can do 14th or the 28th.
I have Paul, the presence of Paul, and Mike can't make it. You're out.
Are you available on the 28th?
Uh, yes.
Is everybody else available on the 28th?
28th is also fine with me.
Fine with me.
Okay.
We can do the 28th.
Maybe we do the 28th, just because we know we have five people?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Gives you a couple, a couple extra seconds?
So that is six powder mill, and we didn't extend or anything to see them, right?
We cleared it.
Clear the docket.
We are going to put them in separate...
Yep.
And then we need to go down.
Oh, actually, let's go back to that now. We neglected to accept the withdrawal without prejudice for 50 Framingham Road. I know we all talked about it, we all kind of thought it was the right thing, but we never officially voted on it. So I move that we accept the withdrawal without prejudice for 50 Framingham Road.
I second that.
All in favor?
I...
Perfect.
Thank you.
Karen, Karen caught that one, that's excellent. November 28th, and...
I move that we adjourn the meeting.
We're, we're done.
Paul's not here, that's his...